I am calling to order this regular meeting of the Cordova Recreation and Park District on Wednesday, August 17th at 6:30 PM.
Thank you. We're going to start with a moment of silence and I would like to welcome Park Planning and Development Manager Laura Taylor to do the introduction. After the introduction, we'll be standing for the moment of silence and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay. All right, so Christina James' mother, Mary Louise Bracho, passed away on July 21st of endometrial cancer. The Board had the opportunity to meet Mary and Christina's dad, Miguel Bracho, during the September 18th, 2019 Board Meeting. Christina was being introduced to the Board for her promotion to Landscape Architect at the time, and her parents happened to be visiting from Wisconsin. In addition to being a loving mother and grandmother who is greatly missed, Mary was a published romance novelist under the pen name Anna Seymour and had published 20 books. Mary passed on her creative writing skills to our own Christina James, who has used her writing skills to help CRPD get many grants and awards. So at this time, we will have a moment of silence in memory of Mary Louise Bracho. Okay, so now I will invite Supervisor Don Natoli up for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Okay, hand over heart, please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So if we could have the roll call, please?
Director Sloan?
Present.
Director Danzel?
Here.
Secretary Yearwood?
Here.
Vice Chair Reyes?
Here.
And Chair Lineback?
Here. And now it's Item B on our agenda, which is comments by the public on non-agenda items.
Thank you. Members of the public may address the Board on district topics not listed on this agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. It's a violation of state law for the Board to discuss or take action on non-agenda items. Board members may only briefly ask clarifying questions or refer the matter to staff. And I just wanted to note for the record that the Board did receive written comment from Angel Ball regarding item number H6. I do not have any other requests.
Thank you. So at this time, we move on to Item C, which is a special item.
Thank you. Item C1 is to adopt Resolution 22/23-11 honoring Supervisor Don Natoli for over 40 years of dedicated service to Sacramento County and the residents of the Cordova Recreation and Park District. So I'll turn it over to Chair Lineback for the reading and then the Board will vote.
So this is a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Cordova Recreation and Park District honoring Supervisor Don Natoli for over 40 years of dedicated service to Sacramento County and the residents of CRPD. Whereas Supervisor Don Natoli has faithfully served the district and represented its residents well since being elected to the County Board of Supervisors in 1994 and for 16 years prior to that as Chief Assistant to Supervisor Johnson. And whereas Don has always maintained a visible presence in the CRPD community from attending important district events like the White Rock Community Park groundbreaking and Rosemont Community Park renovation ribbon cutting to hosting workshops on a variety of topics important to our constituents. And whereas, the Cordova Recreation and Park District has occupied the Mather Sports Center since January 21, 1994, and Supervisor Natoli was involved in the Mather Internal Study Team, MIST, working closely with the district following the closure of Mather Air Force Base in determining a reuse plan and eventually establishing the county's Mather Field Special Planning Area. And whereas the Mather Sports Complex has continued to develop into a regional sports destination, Don assisted the district in securing a completely refurbished Sacramento Kings branded gymnasium floor, which opened to the public on February 7th, 2019. As part of the celebration, a free Junior Kings basketball clinic was provided for 100 local youth, which Don and all those in attendance enjoyed observing. And whereas Supervisor Natoli has worked tirelessly to advocate for the district, including securing Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, funding for the playground at White Rock Community Park, play equipment at Hagan Community Park, and the renovation of Rosemont Community Park. And whereas, Don has consistently spoken to the heart of our community by being invested in people and recognizing the special contributions of volunteers, by being a fixture at the annual volunteer recognition luncheon at the Neil Orchard Senior Activities Center, and by honoring the outstanding Senior Volunteer of the Year at the Board of Supervisors meeting. And whereas Supervisor Natoli has played an instrumental leadership role through significant periods of growth and development within CRPD, perhaps bookended in no more demonstrative way than between the district's 50th and 60th anniversary celebrations, which Don participated in. And whereas Don has endeavored to form strong relations, relationships within the CRPD community, always taking the time to get to know people on a personal level, he has the uncanny ability to remember conversations and seemingly obscure details, which makes everyone Don speaks with feel important and valued. His public service and genuine care for this community will always be appreciated. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Directors of the Cordova Recreation and Park District wishes to honor Supervisor Don Natoli and thank him for over four decades of dedication to Sacramento County and the community and for his partnership with CRPD.
Chair Lineback?
Yes.
I move that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution 22/23-11 honoring Supervisor Don Natoli for over 40 years of dedicated service to Sacramento County and the residents of Cordova Rec and Park District.
Thank you, Vice Chair Reyes.
Second.
Thank you, Director Daniel. Roll call vote, please.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes?
Aye.
And Chair Lineback?
Aye.
Well, just let me take just a moment and first to thank all of you as members of this Board and certainly your predecessors, both as members of the Board but certainly in district leadership. And I want to just say to, to thank you, Terry, for standing and reading the resolution that I'm probably much more comfortable even after all these years in being the presenter, rather, being the one that's being presented to. But I appreciate the effort that went into preparing the resolution and the kindness that all of you had and certainly approving it at 5-0, that's a good vote in any, any day and age. But in all seriousness, I would just tell you that certainly the work that each of you as Board members, certainly your leadership, but all of your district staff, both current as well as in the past, it's been a real honor for me to have had the opportunity to, to work with many in this room and certainly many that have served over the years. And as you were kind of doing a walk down memory lane with some of my involvement, I was thinking back just to many events, certainly not just park dedications, but the, the work that your district directors and your staff have put forth to, you know, best serve folks in this community. And I know, as you all well do, serving as members of the Board and certainly this dedicated staff, you know, park and recreation services is so, so key to the quality of life in any community, but certainly in this community, people have benefited from your leadership, from your work, from obviously good use of their tax dollars. And it's not always easy, as you all well know, and certainly in periods of recession or in periods of pandemic when people have to make major adjustments, not only in their lives, but in the life of the community. It can be very, very challenging for local representatives to carry on in the position that you sought and were elected to and certainly staff that went through their professional development to carry on. But you've done that very capably and I've been very blessed in my life to have had the opportunity to work with people like yourselves and many, many thousands of others in this community. And I know that the district's in good hands with, with the current leadership, but I think you can look back and be very proud of maintaining and preserving the assets that certainly were here as a part of the parks' development. I think back to Paul Hagan and certainly Neil Orchard, who I had the opportunity to know and to work with throughout my career. But each and every one of you that, again, really care about the people that you serve, you care about the facilities that are in the public trust, and you do your utmost best to make, you know, make sure that people have quality services and that they can enjoy the, you know, what is oftentimes pretty much their outlet. I mean, folks that are, you know, working to, you know, keep a roof over their heads and may not have the ability to travel very far, let alone just down the block to, you know, play on, you know, in some of that open space area to enjoy some of the activities that you offer, then enrich their lives. That's so very, very important to people of all ages and all walks of life. And you've done that very capably. And again, it's been my honor to be a part of that for the years that I have and to play the small role that I have in, in all of that. But I thank you. I thank you on behalf of certainly the people of this county. And I thank you for the resolution and the recognition here this evening. And I'll treasure the moments that I've spent with all of you throughout my professional career, but I've made many friends and I know that we'll continue to be friends even in my retirement. And I, I wish you well and certainly, I'm not, not done yet, so we got, you know, a few more months here. So if there's any ways I can assist, certainly be available to do that. But I commend you for your, for your good work and for all that you do and certainly for the role that you play. It's so very, very important in the lives, not only of folks in the Recreation Park District, but I think just generally in the life of a community. So I'm honored. I thank you very much and I appreciate the friendship and certainly the goodwill that you've extended to me over the years. Because I, I once, 44 years ago, was very green, came into this job knowing a little bit about a lot. I've learned a lot more about a lot, but there's always, there's always more to learn. And again, hopefully, the work that we've all done together will continue to benefit people for generations to come.
Mr. Natoli, your three minutes are up.
I knew that was coming, so.
You bad boy.
Anyway, thank you very much.
If I might say to Don, I've known him before I joined the Board, as a leader in our community, and I always told myself that that's the way I'd like to be. Simple, talk, people, always there. But, you know, Don, you have always, always expressed yourself as here for the community, for the people I serve. And you're right, there are challenging times. You are so right. You can never have straight out everyone for you because you have, we have to make decisions. And I, I remember in all that, I want you to know that you're my mentor. So I hope I can go as far as you are, have gone and, and you know, and, and do the hard work. I, I really appreciate the staff. I appreciate my Board members. I mean, we, as you have said, have really grown, but from when I got and joined the Board, I mean, there were interesting times. There were waves that were a little tumultuous and all this, but we have, I feel very confidently arrived to smooth sailing with the staff and the expertise we have. I will definitely miss you out there, but I will always have my eyes open for that tall man because he, he's hot, he's easy to find and you said you'd be around. So I am looking forward to that. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your role modeling. And thank you really for showing me a good, good way to, to, to take challenges, to take good and bad, and still remember one thing. I'm here to serve my community. And they have been to be, they were always your number one. Thank you.
That was beautiful, Inez. Thank you.
I had to tell him.
I, I would love to say something that eloquent, but it, nonetheless, we thank you so much for your years of service. So we appreciate it.
I'd like to say a little bit. Are we going to go down the board?
Go ahead, sure.
I'm not going to start crying, okay? I promise you I won't cry. But for the 30-plus years I've lived in the Sacramento area, I've known you because I worked for Regional Transit and you were there. And you've always been someone that I've always, well, always looked up to. Especially when you're standing next to Linda Budge, it's a challenging photograph. I guess it, you know, if you looked up community service in the dictionary, it would have, it would say, see Don Natoli. I, what, what Inez says, and I, I've heard it a million times from a lot of people, is that, I don't know how Don does it. He's everywhere. And I know, and they don't realize that you've been cloned four times.
God help the world.
And this is, and I would just, I would just like to know, and it's going to take a lot, but how much it's going to take just to fill one of your shoes? And if I could just have one of your shoes, I would put it in, I would shrine it in the, in the, in the county showcase, if we could. You're someone that has become a friend, a close friend, and I'm going to always honor that friendship as we go, as you go forward and what we, you know, wherever we end up in our community service. I'm sure you, you don't just do what you've done and stop doing it because, you know, you're, people are going to be asking you questions. They're going to come up to you and they're going to want your support, even though you, you might not be there, but you, you are there and you always will be. And not only in the, in the trenches, but you're in the hearts of the community and I appreciate you. Thank you.
I'm going to leave it real short and sweet, Don. For me, thank you. And from Ty, thank you. Hi, Sloan.
Thanks, Brian.
So the back. The backstory is that Don came to his Eagle Court of Honor.
I know, I was there.
So, yeah, exactly. So that's why, but, you know, for my, my son, my son who doesn't deal with politics, he's like, that's the furthest thing from my life. But yeah, so thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Best to you and your family and to Ty as well. All right. Well, I think I've probably known you the shortest amount of time, but I've always know, knew who you were. Everybody I've ever spoken to always got a positive thing to say about you. There's very few people that I've ever known or heard of that didn't have somebody, I'm sure they're out there. Everybody's got them. There's not, I don't, I don't.
Drive around Grantline Road, you can see.
Well, there's something out on Grantline I need to take a look at? Okay. I don't want to spoil it. I'll stay off Grantline. So, but like I said, I've knew who you were for a long time and this, this, joining this Board has made it possible for you to meet you. And I, I was, the first time he came up to me, knew my name. I'm like, how does this guy know my name? Like, he's got a crack staff probably, but no. So how do you remember everybody? I always thought that about teachers too. How do teachers always remember all their students from over the years and stuff? But I do want to, personally myself, I appreciate everything you've done. I thank you. You're always, you're a great orator. I learned at the, oh, no, you are. I learned at the Mather, out at the Mather when we were dedicating that Kings, the field or the basketball court out there. And I had to go up after you. I was like, oh my gosh. That's a tough guy to follow. So, but, and just, I had this thing written down, you're just going. Just like tonight. I'm like, good lord. So, but thank you. It's great to know you. I'm sure, like I said, we'll see you around. So.
You're still all my friends. So, thank you also very much for your kind comments and again, for your good work and, and carry on. You know, as I say, through tough times and, and in good times, you, there's a purpose in what you do and you know that. And that's why all of you have chosen to serve in the capacities that you serve in. So you've got a, you know, a great foundation to build off and just keep, you know, keep staying the course. So, but again, thank you so much. I really appreciate it. And your meeting's going to be a long meeting tonight because we've taken this time here. But anyway, thank you so much and again, appreciate it.
Michael.
Don needs a chair to stand on.
Are we doing a funny one after?
I'll do a serious one first. Okay, now you can do a fun one if you want.
Like turn it around.
Ready, one, two, three?
We can do more lighting.
Lighting everywhere up there.
I can change it.
That's right, that's the best I can do.
Can you make us throw? We don't dare do that because we can't.
There's going to be old downs. You can stand on my back.
It doesn't matter.
Just wanted to make sure.
It's okay.
Wanted to deliver it.
I like them. Sunflowers are my favorite.
All right, so we are moving on to Item D, our Consent Calendar.
Thank you. Consent calendar items are considered administratively routine and will be acted upon in one motion unless separate action on a specific item is necessary. The Chairperson will consider any requests for discussion on the items prior to approval of the consent calendar. And this evening, we have five items for your consideration.
Okay, does anyone have any questions or wish to pull an item? If not, I will consider a motion.
Oh, I'll make the motion to approve the Consent Calendar's Items D1 through D5.
Thank you, Secretary Yearwood. Second was, thank you, Director Sloan. Okay. And roll call vote.
Director Sloan?
Yes.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes?
Aye.
And Chair Lineback?
Aye. And now we move on to Item E, Presentations.
Thank you. Item E1 is a consultant presentation, Introduction to the Cordova Recreation and Park District Parks, Facilities and Recreation Optimize Plan. This is an informative presentation only, no action to be taken by the Board of Directors at this time. And I'll turn it over to Manager Taylor to give us an introduction to the item.
It is my pleasure, as the project manager for the district's Parks Recreation, Parks Facilities and Recreation Optimize Plan, to introduce Casey Case, a landscape architect, a principal in charge, and the managing partner of the planning firm Gates &amp; Associates, who we've hired to do our optimized plan. She will introduce the optimized plan, the planning process, and the project timeline. So with that, Casey, come on up.
Hi, good evening. No relation to Casey Kasem, I'm sorry. So I'm going to walk you guys through an overview of what we're working to do on the CPRD optimized plan. I will try to avoid seemingly obscure details as much as possible. So tonight, what we're going to be going through is an introduction of the project team, so who I am representing behind the scenes. Also, what we're hoping to accomplish with the project and what the process and evolution of that project is hoping to look like. Wrap up with some next steps, teeny tiny bit of homework we're going to ask for of you guys, and then end with questions and comments. So, next slide, please. I think we're trying to work on presentation view. So our team that we're working with is myself with Gates &amp; Associates, and I have some lovely support at my staff, who you guys may interact with at some point in time as well. And we're also working with Matrix Consulting, excuse me, group who does some of our programming, evaluation, and assessment, as well as Carrigan Partners, who does some of our funding and financial evaluations. All right, so what is an optimized plan? So I, what really resonated with me, listening to you guys speak about the supervisor and how proud you guys are to be a part of this, is we're hoping to put forward a roadmap for how to perpetuate a lot of that success. So where do we want to focus our efforts in the next 10 years? And how do we do that thoughtfully, keeping in mind the mission and vision of the CRPD? So we want to focus on some of those environmentally friendly, concise, usable, implementable ideas that we can perpetuate for the next 10-plus years. So on the next slide, please. We're going to make sure we align this project with the mission and vision of the CRPD, so focusing on those same high-level goals, which include safety, responsiveness, innovation, sustainability, and accessibility, paying attention to the needs of the community. So a huge effort of what we'll be going through is a community outreach process, making sure that it's really driven in what we're looking for to support the continued investment and stewardship from the community. And our purpose is to create this forward-looking thoughtful plan that's taking into consideration the future potential demographics, the existing community, and what their needs are, where those overlaps would be, making sure we're paying attention to some of those levels of service and giving equitable access to parks and open space, and then making sure that any policies or suggestions we put forth are aligned with a lot of the measures that are being driven by the states or SEQA Acts and climate action mandates. So our project, we simplified it into this lovely graphic that breaks it into these three significant pieces. So we start by listening. We are highlighted in the section, we're speaking to you guys today. We'll also be chatting with a lot of stakeholders, as well as providing an online survey and having some in-person and virtual events. So we're trying to cast a really wide net to make sure we're talking to as many people as possible to really understand what some of the needs are and what we're trying to accomplish. Then in our round two, we'll take a lot of that information we've heard, churn it up and think about all those opportunity sites we have, some of the existing spaces we have, and how are we making those durable for the future? So well-maintained, what do we need in some of those future sites that we need to build? And then ultimately, put it together in a concise and usable plan. So I'll go through each one of these in just a little more detail. So the next slide takes us into round one. So we're going to be looking at what are some of the improvements the community would really like to see? What are some of the things that aren't working so well? What is working really well? What would they like more of? And where do we see that fitting into some of the spaces that we already have or some that may be coming online in the future? And then we'll think about how those can be projecting into the future demographics as well. So paying attention to where we are and where we would like to be. So this effort is really about reaching wide, creating a bit of a brand awareness for our projects. So there is already a project that's live, that, or a project website that's live that people can go to. And shortly, we hope to have the online survey available as well. So some examples of what that process looks like are on the next slide. For a couple of other projects, you can show how we've done studies of the level of service that might be available. What we want to discuss are some of those future priorities. So if we all see that there are differing needs that we're getting from the community, what would be important to happen first, and what's available to us based on some of those funding opportunities as well. So then our second round of our project is when we start identifying where these things could happen. How are we making sure that we're dispersing things as equally as we can and giving people reasonable access, as well as to what the quality of those parks and recreation spaces might be, and paying attention to some of the funding opportunities we have, and also looking for And paying attention to some of the funding opportunities we have, and also looking for some of those partnerships. So there's opportunities for sometimes private or public partnerships with schools, or maybe local businesses. So the next slide shows some examples of how we've implemented these on other projects as well, so identifying some funding opportunities, what those could look like, how we take a lot of that high-level information that's set forth by the mission and vision of the CRPD, and we overlay that with what we've heard from the community. So we take that and synthesize into that these high-level goals that we're hoping to accomplish. So when we're evaluating who, what, where, and when of our projections for the parks, we're being mindful of that information we gathered in phase one. So then in our final round of the project, we take all of that and summarize it into a plan. It has a nice big appendix where a lot of these bulky things and charts and everything we did are available. But we take that and try to summarize it in a really usable, implementable document that can also be used as a tool when some of these times come where there's unprecedented things we didn't expect. Why was this decision made? Is it still relevant? And if not, how do we need to adapt it to make sure that this is still a relevant and vital document? I think I have one slide showing how some of these implementation documents look. It's mostly just their cover pages on the next slide. Ooh, very pretty. We make lovely covers. And so I think beyond here, where do I go next? What am I telling you about next? Oh yeah, so our community engagement. So this is where we are now. So we are starting the process of shouting from the rooftops that we are working on this project and we would like as many people to know about it as possible. And we have strategized several places to be and make information available so we can hopefully hear from as many people as possible. I think we are excited to have the opportunity to be doing a lot of things in person. It was weird that I was very excited to do an in-person thing tonight. There's been so many Zooms and you just like can't quite feel the vibe of the room, and the vibe tonight was one I have never known at a board, so this was really fun to witness and be a part of. But we've identified events where we can be where the people already are. So we're not dependent on having our own standalone thing draw its own awareness. Instead, we're gonna partner up with some of the things you guys already have going on, for example, Community Day, Halloween at Hagan, and the tree lighting. And then for our round two, we'll be present at some events. We've identified a few options where we'll be presenting some of our ideas and how that plan will look. And then you see the three opportunities where we'll be visiting with you guys. So this is kind of the kickoff, informative mostly, and then you'll be seeing us again once we have finished the community outreach and have some ideas about what those high-level goals will be, based on that community feedback. And then you'll see us again when we have the documentation and our recommendations for what that optimized plan would be. So our next steps, you will see us again, or I'm sorry, hopefully we will see you at the Rosemont Community Day, the Halloween at Hagan, or the tree lighting. We're going to be starting on some of our existing conditions analysis. You might see me or some of my team out and about, getting an understanding of what we're working with, of what's existing in here. And then we'll start putting together our community workshops and beginning to meet with stakeholders. And I mentioned, just a tiny bit of homework for you guys, I promise it's not painful, it's just helping us spread the word. So letting people know that this project is happening, letting them know that in September, we'll be having an online survey that's available, which we'll try to kick to you, oops, sorry, kick to you guys to blast as far and wide as possible as you can as well. And you can see there's a link to the website right up there, so it's on the CPRD website with the backslash optimized plan. So I believe that, yep, that ends our presentation, but I'm available for questions as well.
Want to start with you, Director Sloan?
Sure. Casey Case.
Casey Case.
Just in case. I'll take a case. Okay, I know that this is not an easy task, because we've accomplished, we tried to accomplish the same thing with a 20-year plan, which it's hard to think five years ahead, let alone 20 years. And so when we started going too far out, we seemed to forget that the census changes and things, demographics change, and so I think the key here is what you're, you're really hitting the point of getting the word out. Getting community engagement, because if we send 100 notices out, we get 10 people. And that's always been about it. And people say, well, that 10%, that's good. I'd rather have 50 people there, you know? I want, I want really people to be, and there's a, a lot of homeowners associations that we could be, you know, going to and getting their opinions, and they could be spreading the word also. So I think this is, I'm excited about the whole thing. I loved your presentation.
Great.
Some of these figures here are kind of strange, running through this landscape here, but I know, the one, the kid, I saw that one person in the front on a sign, it was no running across the street or something. But I thank you and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Yes, we have a very robust stakeholder list, and it does include as many HOAs as we can get our hands on.
For me, I was the board member appointed to this ad hoc on stakeholders. So just between now and next board meeting, I, as of today, I, six, six meetings that I will be attending. So I guess we'll be seeing each other, I'll be seeing a member of your staff via Zoom. Thank goodness for Zoom still, because you know, two meetings in a day, things like that, that's gonna be fun. But looking at the, looking at the stakeholder list, you know, because the first one that I have is with staff, and then, you know, it runs through so many different community groups and this, that, and the other. Getting the word out is gonna be real easy on us, I think, for all of us. It's, it's something we like to do and make sure, like Director Sloan said, you know, 10%, it's not good enough when it comes to this. We want, we want, you know, a greater number, because we want people to know that we're, we're caring about them and we're listening to them. So I'm excited for this. Can't wait to, I guess it has started now, as officially today, so let's get this thing going.
Thank you.
I, I just wanted to mention, I noticed you go CPRD, and it's CR.
CR, PD, sorry.
Recreation comes before parks, you know?
That's why they're running.
Yeah. And that, that kind of, maybe they didn't even notice it, but it, I noticed it right away.
Thank you, yes.
Yeah, just FYI, you'd hate for your stakeholder to correct you on that.
I really appreciate that. Thank you.
I, I really am excited about this. I have always enjoyed and used strategic planning and knowing where you want to go before we get moving. And I had administrations where they couldn't even look at me and tell me, do a five-year plan. It's like, how can we? Revenue changes every year. I'm like, well then, hold it same, but do something. But this, so I'm really looking forward to this. I also can feel the energy that you bring, and I'm hoping that you'll be able to keep up, keep it up. And, and, and we do have, I would say, we're looking towards also new residents that are younger, that have families, that, you know, and, and that's really important. I noticed that when we did online surveys, we got a lot more responses. So, you know, that'll be really good, neat. I would love to attend the stakeholder meetings. It really helps me as a board member to just see what, where people are coming from and what they mean, because, you know, you get, you, you can talk about and use the same words, but it means differently, and you just want to make sure you understand that. So unfortunately, it's on my babysitting days. I'm gonna have to put him to nap at 2:00 so I can run here, or wherever, and then but that, oh, if it's Zoom, that's great. Make sure I'm on that list, because I really, I think we, it's really interesting to see, you know, what our constituents value. And then I'm, I'm really looking forward to us being able to have a plan. I think we work so much, the board and the management team work so much more purposefully having even just that, that master plan, you know, and, and defining. I mean, I know that General Manager Larkin is very good with working with us if he saw that there were words that were not meaning the same. And, and help us do it in a way that we don't become opposing, because plain and simple, my word doesn't match your word, the meaning. So I really appreciated that, and I'm hoping we get a chance to do this. Now, your timeline is, what is your timeline with the whole project?
So we have, yeah, it's on our slide. I think it's like the second or third slide. So we're, right now, we're, there we go, that shows it. So we're going through, December, we'll be doing community outreach, then we'll start our visioning and prioritization. It takes several months doing that, so we're looking at like end of 2023.
Okay, so that, that's good. That'll give us enough time to be able to be out, you know, there telling people
Yes.
to participate in it.
Yes.
The ease with, with which they can get to it, online, Zoom meetings and all that, is really what's going to
Absolutely.
allow us to have all the good, as best of feedback.
And we'll do, we'll make QR codes and have things available wherever we can.
So I'm excited. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to sort of reiterate something that Director Sloan said, which is to make sure, it may be a much briefer, but, you know, brief presentations to the various homeowners or community associations. I, I agree that going to the community events as well, but I would like to, because those are, you know, typically, you're more involved, members of the public anyway. And I'm just thrilled to see a district-wide optimized plan. I think, you know, maybe the Nexus study sort of approached that, but not really. And, yeah, yeah, so, and I know there was a, there was a master plan for the city areas of the district, but I can't even remember seeing a master plan for the unincorporated area, I think like 40 years ago. So I think this is great. Have at it.
Great. Thank you.
So, now we have to, thank you very much. We appreciate your presentation. I covered up my agenda. Hold on a second. I know. Paper, paper. I actually liked, I loved reading this in paper. It was fold over the corners and everything, yeah, so, I know. And, you know, and I'm, I'm in favor of not, you know, killing all those trees, but honestly, this is a way easier way to deal with the board package. So now we are moving on to item F, committee reports.
Thank you. Item F1 is just a standing agenda item going forward. The ad hoc committee for the Parks, Facilities, and Recreation Optimized Plan stakeholder meetings. And that would be Director Dansel reporting out if he attends those meetings. So to my knowledge, there has not been one yet.
No, and I will just say, Ms. Jones, and I told General Manager and Ms. Jones today, I looked at this and I was like, wait, where did I miss a meeting? Because now that, now that I have a temporary job again, I got a call the other day saying, hey, we just want to make sure that you're gonna be able to make these meetings. And then I saw this the next day in the board package, I'm like, did I already miss one? Is this why I got the phone call? Because that was the most horrifying I'd ever felt since I've been here. And, but no, I, I did not miss any. And I do not plan, and I've talked to my job, and my job is, hey, that's your first job, where, you know, you're helping us along. But just to let everybody know, the, the dates right now that I have meetings scheduled for, and there could be more popping in there, the 23rd, the 30th of this month, the 6th, the 13th, and the 20th of next month. So there are six, within those five dates are six meetings coming up between now and then. And that's, the 20th is the day before the board meeting, so I will have plenty to report out on next one. I promise, because I will be at those meetings.
Take good notes.
Yes. I'm gonna borrow Ms. Jones's tape recorder just to be real good. Or if I can get them to let me hit the record button on the Zoom meeting, that would be even better, but, so I can go back and rewrite my notes. Thank you.
Okay, so now we are on to item G, which is a public hearing item.
Sorry, I scared you, Director Dansel.
That is okay.
Thank you. Item G1 is to adopt Resolution 22/23-14 approving the final budget for the Cordova Recreation and Park District for fiscal year 2022, 2023, and authorize the General Manager to file with the County Auditor Controller.
Okay, so I am opening this public hearing at 7:15 PM.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to CFO Goodell.
All right. Good evening, Chair Lineback and board members. If I can get this going. All right, so I am pleased to present tonight the balanced final budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023. I want to thank all the staff that's been involved in this process, the oversight members of PMRID, the Budget and Finance Committee, the Capital Improvement Project Plan Committee members, and, you know, this is always a team effort, it truly is, and putting the spending plan together. And I really appreciate it. So this presentation is going to cover all the goals and priorities, the funds, the differences between the preliminary budget and the final budget. And then finally, I'm gonna take, or show a snapshot of our general fund reserves and what it looks like today. All right, so every year, we try to find a theme that describes what that operational spending plan looks like and highlights. There were seven that kind of developed from that philosophy. The first, of course, is always keeping confidence in our investors that we're gonna make our debt payments on time. And I think it truly is a variable on why our bond rating went up this year as well, so that's great. Next is we're gonna instill a COLA. It is part of the budget, but I understand it's still an item to be discussed later. And then the allocation for parks and fleet equipment. You know, it's such a great goal in providing the necessary tools for staff to be able to keep our parks amazing. And so that's been a really good allotment for that particular thing. Now, we have been challenged. This year has been difficult in getting equipment. We have ordered them and not received them. And so we'll talk about how there's gonna be some carryover of unspent funds from last year and encumbered into this year, so we'll talk about that. And then patience with projects. This team does enjoy investing in the infrastructure in our parks and facilities, but as you will see later on, that we had quite a bit encumbered and rolling over into this year, because we just couldn't get them finished. And then staff, you know, it's a challenge to retain, it's a challenge to hire. And so I know that's another item that we're gonna discuss later on, but it's definitely a priority and a goal. And then tonight, we kicked off the optimized plan that Brian's gonna attend the meetings to. So I saw a great presentation earlier, and I cannot wait to see that final outcome and direction that we get from that study. Definitely will have an impact on our future budgets. And then finally, inflation, it's kind of a funny thing to have as a goal and priority, but I think it's important that we understand and, and how it impacts our budgets and know it's, it's a real thing. And so how is it gonna be part of that process? You know, we, we've tackled so many other obstacles in the past, and I believe that this proposal addresses it and will maneuver us to that finish line. So these are the seven goals and priorities to kind of help develop this year's budget. So this year, we are running with nine different funds that are the resources that we use as our overall spending plan. Nothing new, we've seen all these before. It's our general fund, it's our landscape and lighting districts, it's our community facilities district, and our Cordova Golf Course, our enterprise fund. There are two additional funds that are not, they don't have any activity this year, so they're not part of the budgeting plan. But that's 347D District Wide and also 347S Glenboro East in place. Construction has yet to take place, and so we don't have any activity there. The board did approve our preliminary budget, thank you, on June 15th. We had a workshop that reviewed and compared time periods. We talked about proposed projects and the overall spending plan. And so for today's purpose, I'll present any kind of modifications that we had from that budget. And so to start, I'm gonna shorten this presentation by knocking out the ones that we didn't have changes to. And so boom, as you can see here, there was no changes to our salaries and benefits, our services and supplies, our debt obligation and service, and any transfers or our resale of commodities. And so those are the same that we had in preliminary that we do in final. Halfway done. All right, so here's the big one, right? So last year was very interesting. We, we budgeted $4 million for our capital improvement projects, or 55 projects that we had in the list. And, but just due to delays and shipping and products and contractors, you know, we were only able to complete about half of them. And so there's about 1.6 million worth of projects that we didn't do last year. Unfortunately, projects don't care about a fiscal 12-month period that are gonna roll over into next year. And so we did have a good big bump in our reserves, bottom line, last year, but we're gonna encumber 1.6 million of that and add it into this year. but we're going to encumber 1.6 million of that and add it into this year. So let's talk about that. The pool sheds were installed, but not 100% paid. And the bleachers ordered, so financially, those bills are going to be paid into this year. So we had to rebudget those. The optimized plan, we just kicked that off, and so we did allocate funds last year. We didn't spend them, and so we're going to rebudget them for this year. And then playground repairs for equipment, we just didn't get the parts in last year. And so, or the rubberized surfaces done. And so we had to put them into next year. And there's quite a bit of parks. I think there's Allstrom Park, Cobblestone Park, Fetter's Bill Park, Gold Station Park, Haron Landy Community Park, Hillside, Larchmont Rossmore, Lincoln Village Community Park, Manlove, River East Park, and Rosswood Park. So there's quite a bit of playgrounds that we didn't get to last year that we definitely want to again this year. So those funds were rolled over. Also, our sport courts revitalization, we did complete Eagles Nest, but those bills are going to be paid for in July and later. And then Larchmont Community Park as well, you know, that project was done, but we still have some finishing touches to that. And then Rosemont Community Park, obviously, we got to get going on that project this year, so it came into this year. The pathways are sections for VOZ. It was again completed, but the bills are going to be paid for this year. The Dave Roberts Community Park, Fetter's Hills Park is going to be getting started. I think we have a contract going tonight. Gold Station Park was done, but again, most of these, the bills are going to be paid for this year. And then finally, other, the restroom and Lincoln Village Community Park, saw it today, the groundbreaking there. And also range netting, that's going to protect the east side at the golf course. Again, projects that we thought were going to get done last year that we just couldn't do it. So we're going to use the funds that we had encumbered, and we're going to use them this year. So that, for the most part, represents the projects for this year. The full list of parks and facilities and descriptions and costs and details are in the final budget book. All right, so the next piece from preliminary to final that changed was our equipment. Again, same story. These items were ordered, and a lot of them are like six months plus out for us to get our trucks and equipment. So, you know, of course, we don't pay for it until we get it. And so once they're delivered, we'll pay for them. We budgeted $242,000 last year, but we only spent $128,000. And so that left 114 that we're just going to encumber those funds into this year as well. And also, there are grants and revenue that we had tied to some of those projects that I mentioned above. So there is some money coming back on the grant side. There's an SHRA grant, there's a county grant, and there's a city parks renovation fund grant for Fetter's Bill that we have for about $800,000. And so these are the major changes that we had approved from preliminary to final budget. And, yeah, so it's pretty, pretty streamed. It streamed flowed really well, so. The last thing I want to say, though, before we move on, is about reserves. I like to highlight this because it's important to see. It's a really good indicator of our financial health is how our general fund is doing. And this shows the last five years of what our reserve balance looks like at the beginning of the year. It's even more impressive when you take a look at it on a climbing line chart, right? It looks pretty cool. And so it's amazing how much we've been able to kind of sock away. It's even really cooler if you take a look at a speedometer chart, right? Kind of see how it's gone. And so, yeah, yeah, it started here five years ago in the red and the low, and now we've moved on to being healthy. And this chart kind of speaks to our policy that we have for reserves. You know, the first step, the first block is to pay our bills at the beginning, first half of the year, the dry period financing. And then after that, it's about deferred maintenance, being able to take care of some projects. It's about being prepared for any disasters or emergencies. And then finally, that investment piece, that last piece, is being able to pay off obligations early, maybe paying off our bonds or loans or unfunded pension liabilities. And maybe even doing some cool new amenities or something creative. And, and so right now, this is where the general fund sits. It's at 110% of this year's annual revenue, so 5.9 million, a 5.4 anticipated. That's how I came up with that. And so that's, it's in a good target zone, right? So, yeah, so that's our general fund. It's looking really good. And I'm very happy where we are as a district. It feels really comfortable and, and good and responsible, so. All right. So the staff report, the resolution, the full final budget book, and schedules, county forums can be found in the board package. I had amazing help with the cover showcasing the golf course and the opening of Beach Hut Deli, along with all the transition pictures and dividers that I had in there from our marketing extraordinaire, Shelby Golden. So I thank you, appreciate it very much. And that's the end of the presentation portion. Chair Lineback?
Thank you very much. What is your, are you a CFO? What is your, yes?
Yeah, CFO today, yes.
Thank you very much. And for your presentation, at this time, I would like to invite the public, if there are any to comment. And hearing none, I will close this public hearing at 7:26 PM. And now it is time for our board discussion. Would anybody like to discuss?
Type a chart I could see you, you could do. Speedometer. I like, I like what you've done, Matt. You're always a very creative guy.
Thank you.
For me, once again, it's nice to see a budget that we can actually easily read, understand. Been here when they were all over the place and numbers were down to, you know, just not where they needed to be. It's great to be on that reserve side. It's great to be balanced. It's great to be healthy. I think are all three things that you use in your presentation, and that's right where I'd like to be in this budget and in life, so, thank you.
Secretary Yearwood?
Yeah, I don't really have much to say, though. It is, like you said, it's nice to see us, we're moving in the right direction. So that's due to your work and your staff's work and everybody putting all their time and effort. I'd really like to get back to the days where we got the budget report that told me how many screws you guys bought them on and where you bought them from. Can I get that report?
I'll remember that for next time.
Please, please don't remember that. Please don't. Please don't. I did used to enjoy reading that, though. That was quite interesting. I knew where you bought your hammer.
Yeah, I have the history of budget books. It's fascinating to look back and how they were reported before, but, yeah.
Well, we've come a long way.
Yeah.
We have come a long way, and I think, Matt, I really enjoyed, I enjoy working as part of the finance committee. It's hard work, so many hours sometimes, but we have come a long way. And I think one of the best things was we set goals. And I, I appreciate, I know we had workshops with our board, and I know we had workshops with our staff, but it's like we set the goal and we made it really important that we saw reserves get collected because we didn't have any. So you go from almost none with deficit to where we are and in a short period of time. But I really accredit that really to management, team management, my board, you know, that teamwork that we did to be able to say, this is what we want. And the clearer the picture was, that's why I'm really looking forward to the optimized plan. The more we could, you know, connect and say, okay, well, here's a, here's something that's not quite in the plan. And we were able, we're able to discuss it, to see it, we're able to, to say, you know, vote for how we want to approach it and where it takes off. So I really appreciate that. I love your presentations. And I read, you see my highlights on every page because I want to do justice to your hard work. I do have some parts that I probably need a little bit of reeducating to understand. Or even, I do know that in the back of my mind, I'm constantly watching for the villages of Zinfandel because that has always been an underfunded, you know, project in the site because of how it started in the very beginning, okay? I know we've had different options, and I know we're still. I want them, the people from the villages of Zinfandel to know that we are not forgetting their needs, but we, they need to help us with it, you know? So I'm, I just wanted to make sure that, how you feel about their, the funding and their budget.
Yeah, that's the one area that is always concerning. You know, it used to be multiple analysis basically highlighted on that one. So they're about, if I did a speedometer on them, it'd be like 10%. That's where they would be. So they'd be in the low. And, and so they bring in just about a million dollars, and their, their reserve fund balance was like 116 to start. So, yeah, they're, they're pretty low, 11%.
So that is, that's something that I know my board members and I will not forget when we start with the optimized plan, to see strategies. And at the same time, I know we had some possible options that we've deferred, okay? But that is something that I, I, because it drains on the general fund, you know?
It could, and luckily it hasn't so far. And I'm hoping too, with all the development that's happening in that area, I mean, if you've ever been down Zinfandel, lots going on with sprouts and more homes and apartments and stuff, you know, that'll bring in extra resources for us that'll go exactly towards that neighborhood, so. We'll see.
Okay, so that's one of the reasons why. I wanted to talk about some of our, our debt, you know, the bond issue. And I just wanted to understand that, I want to understand that Mather, like our Mather Sports, we refinanced it in 2018. And we're, we've got, what, nine years?
No, no, about five years left.
Yeah, we had nine years.
Nine years to start, right.
Nine years to start, right.
2027.
But that started way back before the refinancing.
And 11 years before that.
Which was, yeah. So that, we have five years to work that down. It's wonderful. Five years go by so quickly, and I'm looking forward to having that cleaned off.
Yeah, we all are.
I, I mean, you know, very much to, to staff and management's hard work that we were able to turn. I remember I had just joined the board when they had decided on purchasing the property by the golf course. And it was not a good investment, and it took some time. But with management's astuteness and all that, you brought us, the market came, and we were able to at least get back even a little more than what we had paid for it. And that, I think, is something that I am very happy with because our stewardship, you know, rather than losing it and losing money on it. So those are some really good, good parts here. The bond that we're paying on, this is for the community pool, right?
Right, Cordova Community Pool.
And that was like a five, five-point-something million that we had.
Right, correct.
We pulled that out to put in our share. Am I right?
That was ours that we take care of, correct?
That was our share into the pot of 13,000 or whatever.
For 30 years, correct.
Yes, for 30 years. And that, that go, that's for 30 years. What, what percentage are we paying on that? Was it?
It's three, 3% something, three, three-plus percent, yeah. And it's a pretty big number when you look at the interest on it, right?
Yeah, I was looking at the interest.
But that's over 30 years too, right? It's over 30 years.
We got 5 million, and then we're paying 3.8 by the time we finish in 30 years.
Right, it's, it's just like a house. You know, if you pay $400,000, you're paying $300,000 in interest over 30 years.
You are so correct, and that's one of the reasons why I wanted to make sure. Well, we keep that in mind. You never know.
Well, if we ever get that needle into the investment, that's where we start talking about. If it makes sense to pay that off early to have like millions of dollars in savings, so.
Okay, very good, very good. That's good. That's how it works. Okay, so that and then Mather Sports Complex, those are our liabilities.
Those are our two, two major loan payments that we pay.
Anything else?
Yeah, we have a, we do, we have a large mower and a van, a recreation van that we're paying.
Yeah.
And golf carts.
Yeah, but those are the two big ones. Okay, no problem.
Yeah, I don't show those schedules because they're just, they're small.
Yeah.
But those are the two major ones.
75 or 78, yeah. So I just want to make sure because that's something that hopefully in our optimized plan, we can show. If we get to where, like you said, we can get to the investment part, then we can see, do we need to go to 30 years and pay 3.8 million here? Or can we cut it short and save the money?
I mean, it's a, it's a low interest rate. And the Mather, the Mather refinance was even lower. It was 2-point-something that we got that one at, so.
That's good, yeah. All right, so that's it. Those were the other, that's the only comments I wanted to make.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When you mentioned the ones where you did the work in the last fiscal year, but the bills are this fiscal year, are they not dated for last fiscal year? I mean, are you?
Be in cash basis, right? So as far as our reporting aspect internally, we need to, to, through the county, we got to show it for next year because we're going to be physically writing the check. We can't put the bill in and say that it was for last year. Now, when the auditors do it, the auditors will do it.
Period 13 is for, though?
Right, but period 13 is short, and we still don't have all the bills for all those projects yet. So they'll, they'll still be later on.
Yeah, so that, and that actually accounts for some differences in fund balance that you may see, like in the audited financial statements versus.
Big difference, yeah. So our, yeah, accrual for audits is going to look much different this year because of that.
Yeah, okay. I was just curious on the Cordova Community Pool Bond. The payments are increasing over time instead of being the same annual payment.
Yes, it escalates, correct, because there's different interest rates. There's coupon rates that change. They go from 3.5% to 5%. And so that's why it may be advantageous for us later on to pay that off. We can't now. There's a period of time, and I think it's 10 years that we can't.
That's how I remember it.
We can't do it, but after that, we're able to.
Yeah.
Because that's why otherwise, people won't invest in us if we're just going to pay it off, and they're not going to get, you know, their interest payments.
Yeah, yeah, I was just, you know, it's almost kind of striking because on one side of the page, every single payment is the same. And then you turn it over, and it's like, wow, those are actually increasing.
Right, where Mather payments, it's fixed. It's the same amount.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Like a typical mortgage, yeah.
I think that's all I have. You, you answered a couple of questions I had sort of offline, which I don't see the need to bring up because they make you look smart and me look dumb, so I won't talk about them.
Well, I appreciate you reading it. That's, that's good.
Oh, every, every line, I promise you. Okay, I don't really have any further questions. Does somebody want to make a motion?
So Chair Lineback, I will move the Board of Directors to adopt Resolution 22/23-14, approving the final budget for the Cordova Recreation and Park District for fiscal year 2022/23, and authorize the General Manager to file with the County Auditor Controller.
Thank you, Vice Chair Reyes.
Second that.
Thank you, Director Danzel. I believe I heard you first. Roll call vote, please.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes?
Aye.
And Chair Lineback?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Very good.
All right, for all that, everyone. Hard work. Hard work. Oh, mine was for the staff and the team. I'm pulling your leg.
Okay, so now we move on to Item H, which are the regular calendar items.
Thank you. Item H1 is to adopt Resolution 22/23-15, amending the full-time rate scales as required by California Code of Regulation, Section 570.5. And I'll turn it over to HR Manager Andrea White.
Good evening, Chair Lineback, Board of Directors and Staff. Tonight, we are bringing forth an amendment to our full-time rate scale. And this is really just an extension of the final budget. We do this every year if we propose a COLA. So the scale that's presented here tonight, although we're going to talk about salaries in future items, this is just based off of the budget. You know, those items are for your consideration, which are separate from what has been put in to develop the budget. So what we're asking you to approve is this rate schedule. It only amends the full-time scale by 3%. And it is something that's been discussed in your finance committee meeting, in your workshop before, and then bringing forth tonight. This will be effective July 1st. So that's important to note because so is the budget, is effective July 1st of this year. And I do want to make one little side note mention that we are aware that part-time, or our minimum wage may increase. We haven't quite gotten the notice from the Department. We haven't quite gotten the notice from the Department of Industrial Relations, you know, from that regulatory agency that minimum wage will increase. But we expect that it will, and we will make sure to account for that, you know, as we come closer to January 1st of 2023. And with that, I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
Director Sloan. Director Danzel.
I have none, ma'am.
Secretary Yearwood. Vice Chair Reyes.
No, no questions, just I'm excited to get that COLA out. It's been a while, and we really feel like it's very, very fair.
Okay, and I don't have any questions, so, or comments for that matter. Would someone like to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I move the Board of Directors to adopt Resolution 22/23-15, amending the full-time salary scales as required by the California Code of Regulation Section 570.5.
Thank you, Director Danzel.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Director Sloan, roll call, please.
Director Sloan.
Aye.
Director Danzel.
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood.
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes.
Aye.
And Chair Lineback.
Aye. So now we move on to Item H2.
Thank you. Item H2 is to approve the master list of class titles and recommended, as recommended by the district's consultant, Ralph Anderson and Associates. And I'll turn it over to General Manager Larkin.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. If we could give maybe Doug a call. Our consultant will be joining us via phone this evening. Unfortunately, he had an accident, and so therefore he wouldn't be able to make us appearance in person. So he will be joining us on phone to present the item related to the next topic. But for this topic, as a part of the class and total compensation study, management is recommending that the Board of Directors approves the master list of class titles recommended by the district's consultant, Ralph Anderson and Associates, as a part of the district's classification study. In December 15th, 2021, the Board of Directors authorized the General Manager to execute a consultant services agreement with Ralph Anderson and Associates, and to complete a job classification and total compensation study. To date, staff has met with the consultant regularly to provide job classification information, complete job analysis questionnaires, and make available additional information to provide an understanding of the district's personnel system. On February 6th, 2022, the Board authorized a list of survey agencies to anticipate and understand the labor market, provide data for allocating total compensation, and provide feedback on classifications used within our industry. In early 2022, all full-time and part-time staff completed and submitted the individual job analysis questionnaires. This gave the employees the opportunity to fully describe their duties and responsibilities, and inform the district of the knowledge and skills, abilities, and physical requirements necessary to do their jobs. All questionnaires were reviewed by supervisors and management to comment and add additional information as needed. Our consultant analyzed the questionnaires and interviewed at least one person from each classification when applicable. This project included consideration of job analysis, class plan development, position allocation, career ladders, class specifications, FLSA analysis, and ADA compliance. In addition, the consultant has corresponded and met with management on multiple occasions to align with the district's philosophy, sorry, policy objectives, and with special regard to historical practices and internal relationships analysis. This has resulted in the recommendation to add the following positions: Senior Management Analyst, Human Resources Analyst 1 and 2, Associate Planner, Planning Technician, Construction Project Manager, Facility Manager, Park Maintenance Technician, Mechanic, Lead Mechanic, Recreation Manager, and Senior Recreation Coordinator. The fiscal impact has not yet been defined. If approved, the management intends to bring the full scale with the added amended classifications to the September 21st, 2022 Board Meeting for the fiscal impact listed. The Human Resources staff will prepare an updated salary schedule to include the approved positions for the Board's consideration at a future Board meeting. So I'm not sure if Doug is on the line yet.
Hi, this is Doug.
Hi Doug, this is Danielle Jones, the Clerk of the Board, and we have you on the speaker system. We are currently discussing Item H2, and we just wanted you available for these two items.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi Doug, it's Patrick.
What, Patrick?
I just went through the staff report related to Item H2, which was the list of class titles and recommended district positions. And so I will leave it to the Board if you'd like to ask and see if there's any questions for our consultant related to this topic.
Director Sloan. No? No?
I don't have any. I understand the need for the different classes, classifications, so, none right now. Thank you.
I don't have any questions about the different classifications per se, but I would like to include it in the discussion of our next item. So as far as just the classifications are concerned, I don't have any questions. Are we asked to have a motion on this? Okay. Okay, so would someone like to make a motion on this item?
Madam Chair, I move the Board of Directors to approve the master list of class titles recommended by the district consultant, Ralph Anderson and Associates, as part of the district's classification study.
Second.
Director Danzel, and thank you, Vice Chair Reyes. Roll call vote, please.
Director Sloan.
Aye.
Director Danzel.
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood.
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes.
Aye.
And Chair Lineback.
Aye. Okay, so we will move on to Item H3.
Thank you. Item H3 is to review the compensation report and approve a salary range adjustment and implementation plan for all full-time and part-time positions as presented by Ralph Anderson and Associates. And I'll turn it over to General Manager Larkin.
Good evening again. I have the pleasure of introducing Doug Johnson from Ralph Anderson and Associates, who is joining us via phone this evening. Andrea will be the slide progressor as we go through this presentation. At the conclusion of the presentation, I will go through some of the options for the Board to consider. And there will be options, or there'll be time for the Board to ask any questions of both Ralph Anderson as well as staff. So I'll have Doug take it away.
Okay, I will go through the first few slides somewhat quickly because I think it's reviewing information that I reviewed with you once before. But I'll start on Slide 2. As a reminder, in terms of why surveys are done, the whole idea of doing a market survey is essentially to inform decision makers. So we want to provide data so that the General Manager, the Board, and other key stakeholders can utilize that information to be strategic in terms of making compensation decisions. So the idea is to utilize data to make that informed decision. It's not a guessing game. It provides context in terms of your competitors. And ultimately, your objective is to be able to optimize the district's ability to recruit and retain employees. I do note that public and private employers both do these kinds of surveys. Slight difference is that in the private sector, they're essentially buying data or getting data from other sources. Whereas in the public sector, we can essentially customize a survey. We can set up a specific set of organizations, collect and array that data specifically. So on Page 3, there are policy components when we do a project like this. And these are really things that ultimately, General Manager, Executive Management Team, and the Board kind of have to make a decision in terms of these kind of key policies. So one is the agencies in the survey. You recall that I met with you virtually before we ever did the survey so that we could get some feedback on that and lock in the agencies. I told you at the time that another policy component was the market position. Where do you want to be relative to other agencies in the marketplace? And typically, organizations will adopt a market position somewhere around the 50th percentile. And so we have some discussion that we can provide tonight on that. Having data gives you information in terms of where you are now. And so it becomes more relevant in terms of if you know where you are now, it better shapes and frames the discussion for where you want to be, whether where you're at now is where you want to be, or whether you want to modify or improve your market position. I will go through a slide that talks about the survey elements, but we're looking at base salary primarily, and then a supplemental analysis of benefits. And the key question there is, do benefits help you or hurt you? So we can talk about that. And the ultimate goal is in terms of range structures, how you structure your ranges, whether ranges get adjusted, those sorts of things. So Page 4 is a review of the survey agencies. Again, these are agencies that were already presented to you. And you'll recall that we kind of selected them on the basis of looking at organizations that provide similar services that are in the community or kind of within the region of reasonable commuting distance. And then we showed some demographics in terms of size, cost of living. Most of those parameters are very similar. We do have some variance on budget and kind of organization size. Some of these agencies have broader services. Consumers is an example, having a fire service. We don't have many that provide golf services where there's actually golf employees. So some of these agencies do have golf operations, but they contract out those positions essentially. So we don't really have jobs that we can generate in terms of getting data points. So I do note that we're attempting it golf, but ultimately, there just aren't that many agencies that have employees in-house that perform those services. Any questions up to this point before I go on to the next slide?
No.
Okay, I know Andrea's going to interrupt me if I start talking too much. So, okay, so on Slide 5, just to let you know, the survey process, it is a survey that we're doing. We're not relying on a database or reusing data. Essentially, we're customizing a survey. We've got all the background documents, and through the classification study, been able to get a good understanding of the job classes. So the survey process is taking that knowledge and then applying it in the context of a survey, going to each of the survey agencies, collecting information, establishing job matches, arraying data in terms of the salary and benefits. Almost all this information is in a document that we obtained. There may be some instances where if we don't have a document, we've had to rely on information provided by each of the agency's human resources contact. So certain benefit costs are an example of that, or certain issues that might, questions we might have in terms of job comparability are answered in that format. So in the next slide, on Page 6, the scope of data collection, as I said, base salary is probably the primary component. If you were to do a pie chart of total compensation, base salary is going to be the biggest component. But then when we look at other benefits, the categories we typically look at would be things like longevity pay, education incentive, performance pay, deferred compensation. And then we have a retirement number that we can look at. So some agencies still pay the employee portion of the retirement contribution. Most don't do that anymore. There are also instances where the employee may have to be contributing to the employer rate. And so we do look at that as a potential avenue. Then we look at insurance benefits, and these are employer-paid, health, dental, vision, life, your EAP and LPD, long-term disability. And then we can also look at retirement. We typically focus on the normal rate, and then social security. And there are some options in terms of how we model total compensation. So for example, some organizations may not include retirement at all. Part of that equation is kind of how you look at your workforce. So because the pension law has changed in January 1, 2013, so that we have what's called PEPRA, the PEPRA tier, which is a reduced tier of pension benefits for employees. And as time goes on, there's a larger and larger percentage of employees in your organization and in the survey agencies that are in PEPRA tiers. And if we look at total compensation through the lens of a PEPRA employee, there's really no difference. Every agency is paying the same rate, essentially. There's not an unfunded liability, there's not these kind of different formulas. There's just one formula for miscellaneous employees. So if we look at through a PEPRA lens, we probably don't look at retirement at all. If we look at retirement through a classic tier lens, which is employees in the tier that existed as of December 2012, then we may find some variances, but it doesn't always coincide with an agency with a better formula pays a higher rate. Sometimes you have agencies with lower formulas paying a higher rate because they have an unfunded liability, and that can be for a variety of reasons, as I think this Board is aware of. Some organizations have done pension obligation bonds, or they buy down the rate. All that's to say is that we kind of treat retirement with an asterisk, and we may or may not look at that. It kind of depends on how you differ from the marketplace. So next slide, on Page 7, I wanted to make sure that there's a good understanding of the concept of kind of this point in time that we're doing a survey. So this survey, you have to think of, represents the 2021-22 fiscal year, which we are actually past at this point. But when we collected the data, it was within the window of 2021, July 2021, to essentially June 2022, which is the fiscal year cycle of most of the agencies that we're serving. So what that means is that we're comparing apples to apples in terms of your salaries in that fiscal year and the market agencies within those same fiscal years. And any data generated from that presents essentially, either shows you at-market or a gap to-market, but it shows potential equity adjustments that are independent of any other kind of COLA types of increases. So if you were to adopt a COLA, I understand that that may be an agenda item tonight to talk about a COLA, that is actually applicable to July 21, excuse me, July 22 to 23. So it's kind of looking in our current window of fiscal year moving forward. And if you're doing a 3%, these survey agencies are all doing something, whether it's 2%, 3%, 5%, is very dependent on, are they in the middle of a contract? Are they in negotiations now? What's the timing of that? As you know, CPI is higher now than it was two years ago. So there's been a little bit more pressure in negotiations in some agencies to do more than the typical, you know, 2%, 3%, 4%. So if we were to do a survey update now, my guess is that you wouldn't gain any ground. You might actually lose a little ground, but we don't know. And it's likely to be within a percent or two, or basically a nominal figure. All that's to say is that COLA really is not a part of this discussion tonight. Any COLA kinds of discussions or that sort of thing are kind of separate from the measured differences that we get in the survey that we're doing. On Page 8, just real quickly, I wanted to highlight that when we're doing job matches, we're looking at jobs somewhat generically and trying to match, you know, key roles and responsibilities and duties. We look at the fact that most agencies have certain kinds of jobs commonly. You know, admin, finance, HR, IT, rec are going to be in a lot of these cities and special districts. We're looking at the organization structure and how positions are allocated. We're looking at multiple levels in a series in some cases. And ultimately, we're making decisions as to whether a job is a match or not to the job that's in your organization. We do consider the size differences when we start getting into management jobs. So there may be instances where, you know, a good example would be an HR manager, where in some organizations, that might be an HR director. It might be a broader kind of role and scope. In some organizations, maybe it reports to an admin services director. So we're looking at those kinds of things and making a judgment call as to whether or not it's close enough in terms of its similarity of size, scope, role, responsibility, and qualifications. So there is that in the survey. I don't want you to think that just because we have an agency like Sacramento County that we're going to match to an agency head as an example, because that's probably apples and oranges for your organization, given the size difference. So we are doing that on a case-by-case basis with each survey classification. Last thing I'll note is we're not looking at workload or performance. So that's probably not an issue that the Board thinks of. But I know when we talk with employees, they often look at their job through the lens of, hey, I'm a top performer, or I'm doing the work of two employees because we actually lost an employee last year and we haven't replaced them. I want that to, I think that should be considered, and it's just not a consideration. What we're measuring are job values in terms of duties and skill sets and roles. It's not a function of looking at workload or performance. All right, so that sets us up for Page 9, which is probably one of the key items that you'll be talking about tonight. So I want to make sure I plant this seed well before we get to the data. So market position is this con- So market position is this concept of where do you want to be relative to your peers? And I've suggested that most public agencies adopt a market position somewhere between the 50th and 75th percentile. In fact, I'd go further and say most private employers look within that window. And whether you pay at the middle of the market or higher up in the market is dependent on a lot of variables. It could be, I mean, if you have difficulty recruiting and you have high turnover, then that would argue for doing more. Or if you are a large agency surrounded by smaller organizations that you survey, you may choose to kind of rank yourself and say, well, gosh, we're the second or third largest employer in this region. We want to therefore pay at the 75th percentile or maybe even higher in order to be able to kind of match or recognize that. Smaller organization may do the reverse. They may say, well, we can get away with paying something less than the 50th percentile. Maybe we could do 40th percentile. Another common way of looking at this is instead of using percentiles, it's somewhat easier to say, well, let's look at median as our kind of target point, but then let's consider whether we want to do 95% of median. And all we do there is just multiply the median of a survey job. So we have 10 data points. We take the median of those 10 data points, multiply that by 0.95, and that gives us 95% of median. Or you could look at 100% of median, or you could look at 105% of median, which is just taking the median and multiplying it by 1.05. So what that does is it's giving you the ability to position your pay plan at the middle, slightly below the middle, slightly above the middle. And I would say that nine times out of 10, it's a balance of two things. It is a reflection of do you have recruitment retention issues? Do you have difficulty hiring, hiring people into vacant positions? Do you have excessive turnover? And the more that there are lots of yeses to that, the more that might argue for a higher market position. The flip side is you need to have the budget to be able to sustain whatever market position you choose. So when you make an adjustment, if it takes a 10% adjustment to get to median on average and you decide to go with that type of adjustment, then you are permanently increasing wages and then future COLAs are building on that. So it's something that has to be considered in the context of affordability in the budget for the organization.
Hi Doug, we have one question from a board member.
Okay.
Hi, this is Chair Lineback. On this particular slide of market position, I just don't understand the difference between your competitive market position being between 50th and 75th percentile and how that relates to the other option of 95% of median or whatever. I mean, I'm assuming that the competitive market position between 50th and 75th percentile doesn't mean that it's 75% of median. Is that correct or incorrect?
Correct.
Okay.
No, you're right.
Can you kind of see how they, how do those two ways of looking at it relate to each other?
Yes. Okay. So great question. I don't want to do a statistics class, so I'll simplify it. So in the world of compensation, compensation professionals like to aggregate data in quarters. So if you think about a sample of 10 agencies that we've surveyed, we can slice that into the bottom quarter of data, the middle quarter of data, or kind of the, I guess we could say the first quarter up to the 25th percentile, second quarter, which is from 25th to 50th percentile, third quarter, which is 50th to 75th, and then the top quarter, fourth quarter, 75th to 100. So you think of it in terms of, these are slices through a ranked array. So you really have to literally rank your data. If you have 10 data points, top at number 10, bottom at number one, and then the 50th percentile would be average of the middle two. So in between five and six would be 50th percentile, 75th percentile is going to be around rank number eight, 25th percentile is going to be around rank number three. That's a very simplistic view. What that doesn't tell you is what the difference is between the lowest and the middle and the high, you know, what the dollar or percentage variation is across that sample. So what ends up happening is sometimes you have a data set, a job you survey with 10 matches, and the difference between the 50th percentile and 75th percentile is only 3%. And that's because all the agencies pay very close together. Or you could have a job where you have 10 data points and there's more variability in the difference between the 50th and 75th percentile could be 10% in terms of dollars. So these are not percentages. They are, percentile is a ranking of an array. And because that complexity is kind of something that is a challenge for organizations, we flip it over to, an easier way of looking at it would be 95% of median or 105% of median. And I can say generally what happens is 105% of median would give you a salary that's probably around the 60th or 65th percentile. I think in hundreds of surveys I've done, more often than not, the difference between the 50th and 75th is around 8% or so. And so if we did the 105%, that would put you up around maybe 60th, 65th percentile. If we did 95%, it's probably putting you around the 35th or 40th percentile, if you want to convert it. But again, that's dependent on how the dollar differences exist or the percentage from dollar, from agency to agency that you have in your ranked array.
Thank you.
I hope I answered it without making more complex.
Well, it's a little more complex, but I think I understand what you're saying. Thank you.
Okay. It's just two different ways of looking at the data. And I think, again, it's for simplicity, particularly employees, I think, have a much better understanding of saying, we're going to get within 5% of median or we need to be 5% above median. You can think of it that way. And my next chart will kind of show you what I mean by that. So if we want to go to chart 10, and then we can certainly backtrack if we need to. So on chart 10, I normally kind of layer this in so it doesn't kind of overwhelm, but it's maybe better to start from the middle and to say, that middle line represents the median of the marketplace. And what we're going to do is we're showing the number of job titles with these bars out of all the job titles we've surveyed and their relationship to that median. So I'll just dispense with the ones to the right first. So if we start in the middle and we see that there's a bar that's four, that would be four job titles we surveyed that were from 0 to 5% above the median. That means comparing your range maximum to the median or range maximums of these job classifications that we found in the survey agencies. And then we have one job title that's 5 to 10% above median and then nothing beyond that. Where there's more differential is when we go left. So we have three job titles that are within 0 to 5% below median. And then we have, just kind of going to the left, we have three job titles that are 5 to 10% below median. And then we have 11 job titles that are 10 to 15% below median. And then four job titles that are 15 to 20% below median. And then we have actually 17 jobs that are more than 20% below median. So clearly what this chart is showing is that you're below median on average. If we average it out, it's 19%. This is just looking at base salary, so hold that thought. But when I talked about this 95 to 105%, that's the shaded area in this chart. And a lot of organizations will say, all right, median is our goal, but we simply want to get our salaries within, you know, 95 to 105%. So within minus 5% to plus 5%. And it's really a matter of, do you want to try and hit it in the middle? Do you want to hit it on the left side and get within 5% on the low end? Or do you want to overshoot it and be 5% above on the right side? So that, that prior chart talking about market position, we're kind of breaking it into this shaded area and saying somewhere in there is a reasonable goal for most organizations in terms of taking this information and deciding what to do with it. I want to give you one more chart before I pause because the 19% can be a shocking value, but I also want to say, we looked at, so go to chart 11. This is representing total compensation. So this is adding in all your benefits. And you'll see that there's a fairly dramatic shift to the right. So what's happening when you add in your benefits is you have additional value in your benefits that other agencies don't have. And I'll talk about where that is. But you can see that without going through each item by item, the whole chart kind of shifted over to the right. So we no longer have 17 jobs that are more than 20% below. We only have three jobs that are more than 20% below and our, kind of our big window there is 5 to 10% where we have 10 jobs. What's happening here is you have a very generous health contribution. I believe you pay 100% and most organizations have different employer contribution amounts and typically is going to be something less than 100%. Could be 90, could be 85, could be something that's negotiated that isn't necessarily a percentage. But that, the fact that the employer, in this case, you are, you as an employer are paying more of the insurance contribution is creating that gain, most of that gain. Now, you don't have as many cash benefits. We have probably six, five or six agencies, I think that, five agencies, I think, that have longevity pay. So you actually lose a little ground there, but you gain it back when you look at insurances. And I don't think retirement ultimately makes a huge difference. If we, if we look at it through PEPRA, it makes no difference. If we look at it through classic, it makes just a very slight difference. So we've tried to show, okay, capturing this value, is that a consideration at all in terms of how you adjust your, or potentially adjust your salaries? And a key aspect of that is, from a policy perspective, do you want to offset that gain that you have in insurance? That's, that's one option. Now, option two is you tuck away that, that knowledge that your insurance, employer insurance contribution is high, tuck away that knowledge and address that potentially through some sort of future action. Maybe you implement something that allows for, provides more of an employee sharing of that cost. The third option is to simply say, we want to focus on base salary. We're happy to hear that our benefits are equal to or better than the marketplace. If it's happening mostly in insurance, we like having, we like being generous in terms of employer paid insurance, we're okay with that. So it really is a policy decision. I'm not trying to direct you in any direction, just to say what the data is showing is, on base salary, you're on average 19% below market. When you factor in your insurance and all benefits, but primarily because of insurance, you gain a good chunk of that back. But how you kind of implement that becomes something that, you know, the general manager in connection with the board ultimately has to kind of wrestle with in terms of what the outcome of that is. So two big charts, so I'll pause to make sure everybody's caught up.
Continue, we're good.
Okay. So what we need to do is translate this data into compensation adjustments. So on page 12 is really just a very generic example of how you might do that. And I didn't want to pick on any particular job classifications. But essentially, step one is you establish benchmarks. All that means is if you have, I'm just going to use big, just kind of example numbers. If you have 100 jobs and we do a survey of 60 jobs, it's likely we'll have really good data for maybe 40 jobs. And, and for 100 job titles, you could actually derive a compensation plan using as little as 25 or 30 data points. The idea is if we take this example that's shown here, these red jobs, we would be plugging in as benchmarks. And all that means is our widget maker is being set, the salary is based on the market data that was shown in those graphs. And our widget production manager, we have a data point for that, that's going to be based on market data. Then these other jobs that are kind of shown there, you're basically using internal relationship differentials. So your apprentice widget maker, that's a learning position. You're going to have a 15% gap. Maybe you already have that kind of gap currently. It's very common to have a 10 or 15% difference as you progress through a series, 10% if it's a moderate difference, 15% if it's more significant, 20% if, you know, between like a supervisor, subordinate, manager, supervisor. And then you can have some offshoot kind of thing. So all this is showing you is that we're basically taking this raw data and then we're going through an analytical process where we're plugging in benchmarks, building internal relationships, and then kind of reassessing, how does that look? Let's sort it high to low. Let's look at relationships between accountants and other jobs related to accounting or between, you know, parks workers and other kinds of maintenance workers and, and, you know, and basically building kind of the equity that fine tunes it to best fit your organization. A lot of that is relying on, to some degree, if you've always paid three jobs titles the same and they operate in the field and we have three different data points or potentially three different ways of setting salary, we tend to want to honor the historical relationship to the degree that our analysis indicates that it's appropriate. So that means we're balancing historical relationship, market data, and then correcting kind of equity compaction, other types of issues as we go along. And the ultimate result of that is described on, kind of in steps on page 13. So we had essentially 36 optimal benchmarks that we utilized. That's what we're using to build your compensation plan. We have internal relationships that are derived from historical relationships and these kind of minimum differential guidelines that exist of 10%, 15%, 20%. And then a salary range adjustment occurs where the end result of that is above the current salary maximum. So again, we're talking about salary ranges, not people. So it's really just a matter of saying, this data says that this job classification's pay range needs to go up to, you know, up 5% if your goal is to be at median. And we've essentially run three options. So we've looked at, what does it look like at median? What does it look like at 95% of median? And what does it look like at 105% of median? So a key consideration for you in terms of making decisions is to cost that out. So that's my next three charts is just to talk about how we cost it out and then we can come back to this. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. So if we go to page 14, this is kind of showing this in bullets and then I'm going to show it to you in a graph. So there's essentially kind of two considerations in terms of implementation. Full implementation is the situation where if the range moves up 10%, the day, or in this case, I'm using an example of 10.5%. If the range increases 10.5%, then the day you implement, the employee's salary also increases 10.5%. What that means is that if somebody's on, you know, step four, step D in your current pay plan and we implement the new range adjustment, they would remain on that step four, step D in the new range as well. Now, some organizations will do that math and determine that that's too costly. And so one of the ways you can grow into that is to do what's called the nearest dollar implementation. So what that does is it says, we're going to round the employee's salary in the nearest higher step in this new range. So it could be that a range adjustment of 10.5% only translates to a 0.3% increase in year one, simply the cost of rounding into a step. And then now the employee is eligible for additional step increases they otherwise wouldn't get sometime in the future. So it, it actually significantly reduces year one cost and then pays for full implementation through future step increases. So if you go to page 15, it shows that grid kind of visually. So just using a very simple concept in terms of our old range, which is, I'm just using a five-step example. If we're doing full adjustment, somebody's on step four, they go to step four in the new range. Whereas in a nearest dollar implementation, they would go from step four to step two in the new range and then they would get two more step increases than they otherwise would have gotten if they'd remained in the old range. So it's a way to be able to build implementation through step increases. A lot of organizations choose this because it's simple. It's something that doesn't require you to do anything fancy with your payroll system. The only negative is employees sometimes push back and say, wait a minute, I've earned a step four in my range. I don't like the idea of being at step two. And that's a fair criticism, except the two responses to that, which is, we can afford to do a step four. So therefore, if you say you don't like that and we can't do that, then of course, the answer is we can't do anything. So I think in the alternative, an employee would accept, if you can't, if going from four to four in this example isn't something you could afford to do, then the best next alternative is to get you into the new range and know that you will definitely get those step increases, those future step increases and get that value. Everybody following kind of the concept there?
Yes.
So the next two charts, and I have only two left, is just showing what these costs are. So page 16, we have the examples here. I know it's a lot of numbers here, but I'm going to focus on the bottom row. So if we were to look at a 95% of median, this is looking at full cost, as if you did everything all in, in year one. If you were to implement 95% of median with an analysis that we've done, it would be a permanent increase of $589,939 just in base salary. There would be an additional cost impact, and I don't know what that figure is for your organization, but it might be in the 20 to 30% range or maybe even only 15%. It depends that there's an additional impact potentially to benefits that are driven by salaries. So a dollar cost at 95% of median of $589,939. If you were to go to median, it'd be $842,121. And if you were to look at 105% of median, it's $1,124,653. So the numbers above are showing the percentages and then kind of showing, you know, if you look at the median, your current salaries are $5,113,968. Your recommended, in this case, would be $5,956,089. The percentage change of those numbers is 16.5%, which is a dollar amount of $842,121. So those are your, these are important costs because however you implement, and there could be other ways to implement besides the next chart I show you, besides the nearest dollar, you're ultimately having, you're ultimately absorbing these costs over some period of time moving forward. So if we look at the nearest dollar, which is the final page on page 17, you can see that using nearest dollar significantly reduces that first year cost. So starting left to right, just looking at the dollars, again, it's the same current, you know, the current, the blue bars are going to be the same, but our recommended dollars are different because we're looking at just the cost of placing them into the new range. And so the first at 95% of median would be $175,863. And so, the first, at ninety-five percent of median would be a hundred and seventy-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars. Median would be two hundred and eighty-six thousand six hundred and seventy-six thousand, that's five point six percent. And then a hundred and five percent of median would be four hundred and thirty-nine thousand six hundred and fifty. So, that would be year one cost. And then, the difference between this and the prior chart is, now you're going to have step increases next year, and the following year, the anniversary dates for employees, that will absorb the remainder of that cost. So, that's something important to consider, that in nearest dollar, this is not just reducing the overall cost permanently, it's simply easing in those costs. It's giving you a year one cost that's pretty low, and then you'll have to budget for more step increases than you otherwise would be having for year two and year three. And by year four, it's a small enough number that you would typically absorb it, meaning this, this kind of mostly fully implements within three years. It's more like four years because it depends on what, where people are in steps and how, what the magnitude of increase is, but it's typically going to be within three years that most of this would implement. And that's all the charts I have, so happy to answer questions or go back.
So, we can either ask any questions, and then I'll go through the staff report, the options for the board to consider, giving staff direction as to where we will go next. So, if we want to start with any questions, then we can go from there.
I do. Okay.
My first question is, maybe we should have done this in a special meeting or a workshop or something. This seems a little odd that we're doing this just in our regular meeting. This is a lot here. I thought I understood this, and I figured what I didn't understand, the presentation would help explain for me, so, which it did to an extent, but this is a lot to wrap my head around, to be honest, so. But I look forward to what everybody else's questions are.
Okay. Well, I have some questions, I have some concerns. First of all, on the selected survey agencies, I do know that these were the ones that were presented to us, and I do know that questions were raised about comparing us to much larger entities. But I would still like information about, you know, I don't really, you know, care how we compare to El Dorado County. I would like to see how we compare to the other, the, the five other park districts that are on here. That's number one, and if, and I'm sure those, that's one reason why I thought this was too much for one board meeting, because that's a question I would like answered before I move forward on a decision. And I'm assuming that answer isn't like available at the snap of a finger. So, that's one thing. Another is that, it's what I wanted to refer back to, to the previous item. There's eleven positions being identified as necessary. And if you look at the charts, they're almost invariably promotions, which I do not object to. But those would be further salary increases presented at another board meeting in September or October when these positions are, are, you know, brought forward for worthy employees. So, I don't think we're looking at the whole picture right now in terms of what this compensation would do to our budget this year, even if we choose the lowest-cost option. This is going to be many more thousands of dollars on top of that. So, I, I just have serious concerns about approving this right away. I, I do think you have the right answer, Michael, it should have been a workshop. And, yeah, it still can be. And with regard to trying to approve it, you know, now, all I can say is that it's, it's worth spending time with, it's worth studying, it's worth retroactivity if that decision is made, it's worth a budget adjustment if that decision is made. But I'm just a little leery about making that big, massive, huge decision tonight without a little more, well, I'd like some information about how we compare to other park districts. I, I'm skeptical about being compared to these much larger entities, even though I'm certain that the job titles, you know, the job positions compared were similar. But these, these agencies have the kinds of resources we could only dream about. So, that's why I would like to at least see how we compare to other park districts. So, I mean, those are my comments, which basically means, as far as I'm concerned, you know, I would like to continue this item at, at best, or just vote no at worst, because I would like more information before I could feel ready to vote yes, yes on anything.
Madam Chair, can I make a suggestion that we get with staff and have them find a time where we can actually sit down and do a workshop on this? I think Director, or Secretary Yearwood said it, I mean, and we, I heard from Directors Sloan, myself, and yourself, that, you know, there was information here, it looked okay, we were hoping it was going to clear, clear things up for us. There was one chart that Secretary Yearwood, I both went, ah, that makes a little more sense. But, you know, I think we need some more time with it. I think we need to be able to ask, ask those questions and make sure that we're, you know, doing exactly what needs to be done. I did ask General Manager in my meeting today that I had with him, I said, what, what are the, what are the financials on this? If, can, I said, the biggest thing is, we can approve it, but can we, can we, you know, can we actually afford it? And he, he assured me that regardless of where we, we're going, we could, we could do this. But I think that there's enough questions after even getting the presentation, I think we need to. So, I, I would recommend that we go to staff and get a special meeting on this. My recommendation.
Is it a matter, is it a matter of tabling this item, or do we just, we have to vote on it?
You can choose however you'd like to handle this topic.
There's nothing that requires us to make a motion, as far as I know. We just fail to make a motion. You know, I can call for a motion and nobody makes a motion, and so the item, you know, dies on the vine, right? There's no motion. And certainly, we can request that staff help us go through this in a little more detail at a special meeting or a workshop. So, shall I call for a motion just for the official?
If the board wishes to continue the item, you can make a motion in that way.
Oh, okay, so we can just make a motion to continue the item? Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I recommend that we continue this item to, after a workshop, and get full information on it.
Okay. Thank you, Director Danzel. Thank you, Director Sloan. Roll call vote, please.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes?
Aye.
And Chair Lineback?
Aye. Okay. Thank you. Now, we're moving on to item H four.
So, I'm going to disconnect with Mr. Johnson.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Item H four is to adopt an amendment to the Personnel Policies Employee Handbook, Section Four, Compensation and Hours, Subsection Four Point Three, Longevity Pay Increases. And I'll turn it over to you, HR Manager White.
Thank you, Board of Directors. This item is brought forth to you this evening regarding our longevity policy. As part of the study, we do study what other agencies are doing, and we've also had a lot of discussion about how our pay components have been working up to this point. What I'd like to talk about is that our policy is unlike any other that I have benchmarked at this point. It doesn't mean it's not out there, but out of the agencies that we looked at here that is part of the study, there's about half, maybe less than half of them that have benchmarked, that have longevity policies, and ours is a little bit different. So, as you know, our current policy states that an employee who's been with the district for ten years and has been at the final step of their respective salary range for at least one year will be eligible for a longevity increase of one percent every year after qualification, subject to satisfactory performance evaluation. So, as far as I've been, for as long as I've been here for sixteen years, that's basically what it has been. What we discovered, and we've talked about, is that if somebody moves on to the salary schedule because of a promotion or a job shift, they in essence lose that longevity. And they go back onto the schedule, which is great, because then they continue to get step increases. But there's no other agency where, in essence, you lose your longevity. There's typically, once you hit certain milestone years, there's a percentage of your salary that's received at that point. Some are ten, some are fifteen, some are twenty, or some are specific percentages at each milestone, typically in a five-year increments. So, it is kind of, has been brought up by staff who have been here for a long time and have like, what happened to my longevity? I'm still here, I've still been here for a while. And so, what we're looking to do is add this longevity to individuals who hit that ten-year milestone because of their additional knowledge, skills, ability, historical knowledge, and to acknowledge their years of service to this community, to change it to where it is issued at ten years. So, regardless of where they may be on the scale, it, once they hit that ten-year milestone, they would continue to get their longevity. So, the proposed amended policy is full-time employees who have been with the district for ten years will be eligible for longevity increase of one percent of their current compensation. They will be eligible for longevity every year after qualification, subject to receiving a rating of satisfactory or better within the performance evaluation period. But I just wanted to make sure you understood the difference between the two. They sound very similar, but there definitely is a difference between the two of them. And the fiscal impact is unknown if the schedule changes, but I do want to mention that we did look into how many employees we have currently. It is on average about sixty dollars per person, per month. And we figured that if, if salaries are adjusted, the most that this would cost would be about ten thousand dollars in the year. But again, that's something that's still to be determined at your pleasure on whether or not you want to make adjustments to that salary schedule after a workshop or moving forward. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
So, my question is, it says, employees that have, have dedicated ten years, can that be current employees, and we have a new policy for, and go to what is more standard throughout the industry? I mean, is there a way to do that? I mean, we have other agencies that turn around, and, you know, when my wife turned around and became a police officer, she was three percent at fifty, now it's three, or it's two percent at fifty-five. I'm just asking, is there, I mean, and they're still both doing the same jobs. I'm just wondering, is there something that can be, that's just a question? I'm not suggesting it, it's just a question. Because, you know, we've got employees that are here today, but, you know, somebody who starts tomorrow, you know, after this policy, you know, I'm just asking, because I don't know what those other policies look like from other agencies, or how that, how that works. Because you said you, we have a unique one, so I wanted to know what that was compared to.
Yeah.
Or how they did theirs.
That's a really good question. I think that, you know, the other agencies may not do one percent a year, although we were informed that's not totally uncommon. They're more like two and a half percent at ten, or for Carmichael, for example, they get five percent at ten years, an additional five percent at fifteen and twenty, so ultimately, they top out at, at twenty percent. It's on those milestone dates where that additional increase has been. And so, in your example, I think that's, you're right, that, I think the formula you're talking about is the Cowper's retirement.
But I was just using as an example that different, different people, starting at different times in, in, in agencies', you know, time, they're, they're different, so I was just wondering.
And it's absolutely true that someone who's a brand-new, let's say supervisor, compared to someone who's been here for over ten years, are they doing the same work? Do they have the same essential functions of the job? Absolutely. But it is, I guess, a reward you would consider for someone who has committed to the district for over ten years or over a period of time, and has some historical knowledge that they're bringing to the district, that's being considered or rewarded.
I was.
I hope I answered that correctly.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. So, I mean, clarity sake, this might help, but I'm, if I understand you correctly, what you would like us to do is to simplify. And if what we are giving is, let's say, after ten years, you earn a one percent increase per year, right?
Correct.
What you were saying was that it was a little bit different in that if someone got promoted, you know, you earned a supervisor, you became the next, you know, a supervisor, that you started from that time on for ten years? Is that the policy? Because what I had, what I, what I believe in, or I, I would like it to be, is, hey, you've still been here ten years. And like you said, it is, in a sense, a reward. Just because you became a manager now, we don't start back and have to be here as a manager ten years before you start. So, I'm understanding your change is simple.
Yeah, it's a little bit, let me clarify that, because that's a really good question. So, right now, someone starts, let's say, as a park maintenance worker, and they work here, and they go through, they start at A, and they go all the way through F, and then they stay there, and, you know, hopefully, there may, there may be adjustments, there may be cost of living adjustments, but they stay there until they've been here for ten years. So, that can take a few years, obviously. And then, once they hit ten years, they would hit longevity. And they would start receiving one percent a year after that point. So, let's say that person gets promoted to a park maintenance worker, too. They now, let's say, are down, let's say they start at level B or level C. In essence, that longevity goes away, they don't get that one percent anymore. Now, they're on step C, D, E, F. And then, since they've already been here for ten years, they would move right into the longevity. They don't have to wait another ten years. Once they hit that ten years, they're eligible, but they have to be at the last and final step for a full year before they're eligible. But there has been question about, because I don't think it's a common, that's my assumption based on, and looking at a few other agencies, that some people go, well, what happened to my longevity? I've still been here for over ten years. And they're put back on the scale with other people who are park maintenance worker, too. So, there's not that additional one percent for the acknowledgement or recognition, or whatever you would like to describe it, for being with the district for ten years. Does that make sense? I feel like I confused you more. It is confusing.
I'm going to try it, I'll attempt to try it. So, if you have an employee who's on a rate, on the scale range, right, and they have exhausted the range, and now there's no other five percent increases steps, they are one, and they're at ten, ten years or more, eleven years, twelve years. So, what happens potentially is, and also in the situation now, we're talking about potentially changing the salary range, there are some employees here that have been here for twenty years, thirty years, that have been getting the one percent that are off of the range. But if we put people back on a range, your longevity acknowledgement, recognition is gone. Because the policy is that as long as you're off the range, you're eligible for the one percent. So, it's tied to the range, not to the longevity. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
For me, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So, the way I think about, I'm not necessarily opposed to this because I think it has a fairly nominal impact on the budget. But if you've been here, you know, more than ten years, you've been getting that one percent because you're not getting step increases. And it's a way to recognize that. If, if a COLA is approved, you're still not getting a step increase, but you get the COLA and the one percent. But if you go back onto the scale, your job hasn't even changed, right? But now- But now we've potentially done something that increases the entire scale. And so you go back on the scale, you get a 5% increase every year minimum while you're doing your steps. You potentially get a COLA. And at least this board has tried to be committed to giving them a COLA as well. And then 1% on top of that. Well, I'm thinking, most people wouldn't say, crap, I'm only getting 1%. Instead, they're gonna say, hmm, I'm getting 8% this year. I mean, I just don't think it's that big a deal. As long as they're, I mean, so now they're back on the range, they're getting 5% increases every year. And so I don't think they're being harmed by, you know, not getting the 1% until they reach the top of the step. But you are talking about rewarding long-term employees, and it's not a ton of money. I just don't think we're, I don't think we're being unkind if they don't do it. But maybe this is a moment to be kind and just give it to them anyway. I don't know. But I'm kind of willing to go either way on that, you know, because, yeah.
You know, I mean, I do know that our, our agency has been, you know, has taken care of the workers, right? And so we have some that go 35 years or whatever, and we would like to continue that. And I kind of feel the same way. I mean, that at least there's a little something on longevity that you're recognized. We know you've been here a certain period of time, you know. So I think we should have something on the longevity set up. So.
Anyone else, any comments or questions? Well, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion on this.
Where's my glasses? Go for it.
I move the board directors adopt the proposed amendments to the personal policies, employee handbook. Section 4.0, compensation in hours. Subsection 4.3, longevity pay increases.
I'll second.
Thank you, Director Sloan and Secretary Yearwood. Roll call vote, please.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes?
Aye.
Chair Lineback?
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna take a little bit of an intermission bathroom break.
Thank you.
Come back for more.
10 minutes, please.
Jan's next, right?
I'm sorry.
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 I love doing that, guys, just so you know.
Okay. We are back and we are now on item H5.
This is one of my favorite items every single year. H5, adopt resolution 22/23-16, adopting appropriations GAN limit for fiscal year 2022, 2023. And I'll turn it over to CFO Goodell.
All right, it's my favorite, too. My own mic, is that good?
That's good.
Check, check, check. There we go. Okay. I can only hear the other voices in my head, not just my own, so. All right, so what is it? What is the GAN limit? So Paul Gann in '79 did a proposition four, which limits the growth in appropriations spent by government agencies. So basically, it's a protection for taxpayers. And a baseline is established and then it's adjusted every year. There's two factors that goes into play. It's population growth and income growth in our area. There's three main sections to my adjustment worksheet, so it's calculating what that limit is and what is the amount that we're subject to. And then are we over or under that limit? And so worksheet one is the data that I start with. I get it from the State of California Department of Finance. It's a letter that comes out every May and it's for the previous year's growth. And so we're lucky enough to have two areas, the county and the city, to draw from. So we picked the largest of the variance of population growth. And so you can see here, the county actually had a reduction in growth. I don't think, I don't think I've ever seen that before, but it actually went down. And then we did have an 0.87% growth in the city of Rancho Cordova. So that's the factor. Maybe they did, right? It looks like that, 0.86, 0.87.
Because they were approving better parks in Rancho.
I mean, it's 5,000 people to 1,000, but I do, I do appreciate the connection. And then, of course, inflation, income, all that, per capita is well aware. That's pretty high. So it's 7.75% from last year. And so we get to utilize all that as part of this calculation. So our beginning balance was 13.2 million last year, no adjustment. And then we take those two factors, which is the city times the per capita, times the beginning balance, and it comes out to 14.449 million. So that's our limit. That's how much we can allocate. And so what we do for part two of the worksheet is we calculate the tax resources of our property taxes, all our assessment taxes, and the interest that we make on our property taxes and assessment taxes. Those are the three main sources. We also would have to include recreation charges that we make over what our costs are. But most of our recreation programs are subsidized, and so we don't have anything outside the golf course, but it's an enterprise fund, so it's not included. So we are also, if we stopped right here, 13 million, just our resources coming in, we could stop and say we're under our limit, which is about 14.5 million, right? But we are granted certain exemptions that don't apply to this limit. And they include debt service, that doesn't go against it, capital outlay, and I don't include the new park or the park impact fee, so that's not part of that calculation. It's just other qualified capital outlay. Any mandates, we don't have any. Retirement and then unemployment insurance. And so that's 4.9 million. We can take off that 13, bringing it to 8 million. That's subject to that appropriations limit, okay? So we go to worksheet three, and we show that. We show what our limit is. We show what's subject to that limit and that we're $6 million under it. And so we, we're good. We're 61%. So that's really the end of my presentation. I would like to make one more suggestion or comment, if I can, because I want to continue this favorite item of everybody's. Is that for future board items, that we have this put on consent. It's really, it's consistent, it's every year, it's non-controversial. We're really about the same amount. You know, our growth and our resources match kind of what our limit goes to anyways. And so I can never see us ever being close to it or being an issue. But anyways, any feedback on that? If we put it on consent, we can always pull it, publicly pull it or what have you. Or we could continue and have a 15-minute presentation by me. So whatever you want. That's my suggestion for next year. Now that's my end of my presentation.
I would suggest that, since it's actually
This is one of my favorite items every single year. H5, Adopt Resolution 22/23-16, Adopting an Appropriations GAN Limit for Fiscal Year 2022-2023. And I'll turn it over to CFO Goodell.
All right, it's my favorite, too. My own mic, is that good?
That's good.
Check, check, check. There we go. Okay. I can only hear the other voices in my head, not just my own, so. All right, so what is it? What is the GAN limit? So Paul Gann in '79 did a Proposition 4, which limits the growth in appropriations spent by government agencies. So basically, it's a protection for taxpayers. And a baseline is established and then it's adjusted every year. There's two factors that goes into play. It's population growth and income growth in our area. There's three main sections to my adjustment worksheet, so it's calculating what that limit is and what is the amount that we're subject to. And then are we over or under that limit? And so worksheet 1 is the data that I start with. I get it from the State of California Department of Finance. It's a letter that comes out every May and it's for the previous year's growth. And so we're lucky enough to have two areas, the county and the city, to draw from. So we picked the largest of the variance of population growth. And so you can see here, the county actually had a reduction in growth. I don't think I've ever seen that before, but it actually went down. And then we did have an 0.87% growth in the city of Rancho Cordova, so that's the factor. Maybe they did, right? It looks like that, 0.86, 0.87.
Because they were approving better parks in Rancho.
I mean, it's 5,000 people to 1,000, but I do appreciate the connection. And then, of course, inflation, income, all that per capita is well aware. That's pretty high, so it was 7.75% from last year. So we get to utilize all that as part of this calculation. So our beginning balance was 13.2 million last year, no adjustment. And then we take those two factors, which is the city times the per capita times the beginning balance, and it comes out to 14.449 million. So that's our limit. That's how much we can allocate. And so what we do for Part 2 of the worksheet is we calculate the tax resources of our property taxes, all our assessment taxes, and the interest that we make on our property taxes and assessment taxes. Those are the three main sources. We also would have to include recreation charges that we make over what our costs are. But most of our recreation programs are subsidized, and so we don't have anything outside the golf course, but it's an enterprise fund, so it's not included. So we are also, if we stopped right here, 13 million, just our resources coming in, we could stop and say we're under our limit, which is about 14.5 million, right? But we are granted certain exemptions that don't apply to this limit. And they include debt service, that doesn't go against it, capital outlay, and I don't include the new park or the park impact fee, so that's not part of that calculation. It's just other qualified capital outlay. Any mandates, we don't have any. Retirement and then unemployment insurance. And so that's 4.9 million. We can take off that 13, bringing it to 8 million. That's subject to that appropriations limit, okay? So we go to worksheet 3, and we show that. We show what our limit is. We show what's subject to that limit and that we're $6 million under it. And so we're good. We're 61%. So that's really the end of my presentation. I would like to make one more suggestion or comment, if I can, because I want to continue this favorite item of everybody's. Is that for future board items, that we have this put on consent. It's really, it's consistent. It's every year. It's non-controversial. We're really about the same amount. You know, our growth and our resources match kind of what our limit goes to anyways. And so I can never see us ever being close to it or being an issue. But anyways, any feedback on that, if we put it on consent? We can always pull it, public could pull it or what have you. Or we could continue and have a 15-minute presentation by me, so whatever you want. That's my suggestion for next year. Now that's my end of my presentation.
I would suggest that, since it's actually part of the documents you submit to the county for the budget, you could just include it with the budget resolution, can't you? Because that's what we did at Foot and Lock, you know, so if you're not allowed to, we were breaking the law.
Yeah, I think there's a reason why we have it separate. But I could look into that.
Yeah, it's on that list of documents.
Documents you gotta submit.
You gotta submit, and you know, you're approving the capital expenditures, which is on that.
So just have both resolutions combined?
Well, you just include it in the packet.
Right.
So it's just included in what you're approving. We're approving like eight or nine different budgets, really, right, all in one boat.
Right.
Just include the GAN limit in that, too.
Okay. I do put it in my final budget book when it's done, as a chapter, but maybe do it as a presentation item along with the budget. I'll look into the county requirements and see if that's possible.
Yeah, just a thought, because, yeah. I was gonna say, as for now, I'll go ahead and move that we adopt Resolution 22/23-16, adopting an appropriations GAN limit for fiscal year 2022-23.
Thank you, Vice Chair Reyes.
Second.
Thank you, Director Danzel. Roll call, please.
Director Sloan.
Aye.
Director Danzel.
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood.
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes.
Aye.
And Chair Lineback.
Aye. We are now moving on to, and thank you, moving on to item H6.
Thank you. Item H6 is to authorize the General Manager to execute a construction contract with Advanced Concrete Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $259,806 for the Fetish Field Park Enhancement Project. And I'll turn it over to landscape architect Christina James.
Good evening, Chair Lineback and members of the board. At the June 15, 2022 meeting, the Board of Directors authorized the district to release a notice inviting bids for the Fetish Field Park Enhancement Project. Upon board approval, CRPD staff formally bid the project. Three bids were received. Staff is recommending that a contract be awarded with Advanced Concrete Solutions in the amount of $259,806. There's no fiscal impact to CRPD as the city of Rancho Cordova is fully funding the enhancement project. And that's it. That's my presentation. If you have any questions about the project or the contract, I'm available to answer them.
Director Sloan? Director Danzel?
Uh, no.
Secretary Yearwood?
No.
Vice Chair Reyes?
Have we worked with A, Advanced Concrete Solutions before?
Yes, they recently finished the Gold River Walkway project.
And we were satisfied and happy with that?
We were, yes.
Because I understand we definitely want to go for the lowest bidder, but at the same time, we need to make sure it's the quality we need. So since we've already used them and been satisfied, that's my only question. Thank you.
I don't have any questions. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move the Board of Directors authorize the General Manager to execute a construction contract with Advanced Concrete Solution Inc. in the amount of $259,806 for the Fetish Field Park Enhancement Project.
Thank you, Secretary Yearwood.
Second.
Thank you, Director Danzel. Roll call, please.
Director Sloan.
Aye.
Director Danzel.
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood.
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes.
Aye.
And Chair Lineback.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. So now we're on to Board of Directors items. And I believe there is nothing for I1, so we move on to I2.
Thank you. Item I2A is regarding training, and there was none over the last period. So item I2B is community activities report and board member comments.
And we will start with you, Director Sloan.
Okay. It always starts here. On August 2, I attended the Rancho Cordova Athletic Association meeting. And it was on a somber note because we lost a real advocate for youth sports in the Rancho Cordova area with the passing of Dennis Lamontia. And I know a couple of people here that attended the service, and I really appreciate everybody coming out and giving that support. Dennis was a big loss to four organizations in the Rancho Cordova area. And so the meeting was basically a, where are we now? Where do we go from here? Because a lot of the people that were board members of those organizations depended on Dennis's input and wrapping up the 4th of July booths for all the different organizations. And no one really knew what to do, so we're actually, they, the RCAA was able to form like a coalition to help those agencies through it. And actually, Dennis was added to the program for the Hall of Fame that we're having here on September 10. He was, you know, he was a real powerhouse, really. To imagine, I can't imagine what he, how he could ever keep doing what he was doing because he was also in, he had challenges with his health, too, so. But he's gonna be missed. And, but then, you know, they did the other stuff, was a lot of the appropriations and things that are coming out for the Measure H. And, but I had to leave early, and so I sort of left right after that. On August 3, I attended the Rancho Chamber Elected Officials Reception they had out at the Marriott, and it was nice. It wasn't as fun as the Children's Museum, but it was, you know, it was an opportunity for a lot of people who have a lot on their palates to be in the same room. And you could co-mingle and talk to people about things. It was actually another one where Senator Nielsen and Supervisor Nottoli were honored for their longtime service. So that was good. I enjoyed that. And then on August 5, I attended the very first concert in the park, a group called Funk Shway. And it was a good turnout. It was a good concert. And unfortunately, I'm not gonna be able to make any of the other ones because it's Friday Night Lights are happening at the high school, and I'll be at every football game around the region, following my son, who's playing on the varsity Lancers, big red team. And hopefully, I think he's in the middle linebacker position. And that's it.
Director Danzel?
For me, mine's quick, simple, easy. I attended both August 5 and August 12, Friday night concerts. Both good turnouts on both. Everything, you know, park looked pretty clean afterwards. People being really respectful of the area. First time, it's pretty much concert goes, second concert on the 12th, there was people out there brought a portable volleyball net and were playing frisbee and things like that for those that didn't wanna, that wanted the music but didn't just want to sit and listen to music. They played out, you know, on the grass, on the upper grass there. And Splash Park, you know, being open definitely helped earlier in the evening, things like that. Very similar to Director Sloan. Now that I'm back at the high school, I'll be working the football games, the home games. So if it's a home game, I'll be there. If it's not, I'll be at the concert area.
Thank you. Secretary Yearwood?
I attended the elected thing for the chamber on August 3. Again, it's another nice event, nice to see all the folks that you don't necessarily see all the time. They did, like I said, recognize Supervisor Nottoli. And again, he had a wonderful speech and everybody loved him, so. It was a nice event, like I said, as usual. It was, I have to admit, it was a nicer event last year at the Children's Museum, but that's all right.
Okay. Vice Chair.
I, I2, attended the Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce Elected Officials Reception. It was, it was interesting to see many new faces, many new faces. I was looking for some faces that I knew, like maybe the city council people. We had a few of them there. But a lot of people, you know, I wish there was a little bit more of some introductions of the others that were there. Of course, I bear in mind, not all of them were elected. But it really was, it was a full room. And there were just challenges sometimes because I guess the people meet each other there and sometimes you can't hear what's going on up front. But anyway, it was, it was good. It was nice to see new faces and old. I saw Folsom Cordova Superintendent. And she was, we were able to say hello. Kashog, Kashog? Kaligian, okay, Sarah. And it was really nice. And we did exchange some good pleasantries and talked about the importance and the strength of our partnership with the school board and our parks. And that was really something that made us feel good. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. And I did attend the Sacramento County Consolidated Lots of Letters Meeting. And actually, it was interesting for once because we heard from the city of Ileton, which we had not heard from the entire time I had been sitting on that board. And despite their letter saying that they'd been in constant communication with this board, which I just think might have been an attempt to say that they were not ignoring the board. Nonetheless, they have been in communication with the county of Sacramento saying they don't have any active redevelopment projects or bond payments. And interestingly enough, the county has been reserving tax dollars for bond payments that apparently don't even exist. So now they have to talk to each other and basically, the city has to jump through some hoops for the county so that the county recognizes that there's no active redevelopment agency there. And then when that happens, they have something on the order of $2 million that they've retained from local property taxes to make payments for bonds that don't exist. So they're gonna have to go through the process of making sure they agree that those bonds don't exist anymore. And then those tax dollars will go back to the local agencies where they belong. So that was really interesting, which for me gave rise to the question about, you know, we get a lot of information or a lot of paperwork on payments for bonds for various redevelopment agencies. But we don't get any information about the residual tax dollars going back to the local agencies as redevelopment agencies retire bonds. And so I've actually asked for, and they said they will produce, a document that shows all of the previously isolated for redevelopment agency dollars that have been freed up and are now going back to the local agencies in each of those jurisdictions. So I thought that might be an interesting thing to see. So that's my report on that. And actually, you know, most of us were also at the Beach Hut Deli opening at the golf course on the 12th, the soft opening, which we're allowed to talk about because their grand opening was on the 15th. And it was fabulous, and I'm just so glad for the golf course and for, you know, the recreation department that that's gonna be such a draw there. And the food was fabulous, and so was the beer. And it was great, and they were lovely and helpful, and I hope a lot of people go. So that's my report. All right. So, and I don't have any additional comments, by the way. And now we are on to item J, comments by staff on non-agenda items.
Thank you. Item J1 is the district-wide monthly progress report for August, and I'll turn it over to General Manager Larkin.
Thank you again, Clerk Jones. All right, a couple of highlights from the month. I was proud to announce that the CRPF, our foundation, raised $2,200 for their booze wagon fundraiser, which was great. They were excited about that amount. They're looking forward to their next fundraising, and they also recruited and appointed three new board members to that foundation who will be doing their orientation at the September meeting. We also had a great generous donation from our CRPD staff, donating to Folsom Cordova Unified School District's Unhoused Students and Family Program. I am super proud of our staff for their generosity. They donated over 500 back-to-school items to this very vulnerable population in our community. And these are, this particular group is, we've taken them under our wing, and Marjorie's been just amazing and thankful for our generous donations that we have on a, mostly a quarterly basis, I'd say, at this point. So the next one will be coming up in the holiday season, and we will make sure that the board is aware of that opportunity to donate as well. We relaunched our IDEA Committee. It's a staff committee, which includes inclusion, diversity, equity, and accessible. Staff are recognizing and evaluating what CRPD is currently doing, taking inventory, and so that we can look at what we're doing and then we can look at where we need to grow and how we can be better at what we're doing. So I'm excited for that relaunch. It's a smart way of going about getting this initiative off the ground is you gotta look at what you got first before you look at what you don't. So I'm excited for that. And thank you, Jill, for the leadership in that committee and initiative. I also joined the, some of the board members for the chamber's elected officials reception. It was a very nice event. It was nice to see a whole bunch of people. It was nice to see our foundation represented there, which was great. So I was very proud to see them representing us so well and promoting us as well.
And they were very proud to be in their positions. I met the president and the vice president, so.
Yeah, they were very, they're very proud members.
I'm hoping the board will be able to meet them all, too.
Yeah, absolutely. There'll be a future, once the board, the new board members are officially like landed, we will have them out for a future board meeting so that you can be introduced to them. We also, I would like to congratulate Chase Bichalati for the promotion to the Recreation Superintendent. So I'm sorry, Jill, I had to steal your thunder there. We're very excited for him to start in that direction. In replacement of Chase, the golf course manager is under recruitment, and interviews will be happening soon. And also, we land any park services supervisor, too. And the reason why I said that, Jill, is because it's under HR's report, so sorry. The other part is important to note. On September 29, at 5:00 PM, we have a groundbreaking ceremony for the Williamson East, or sorry, West parcel. We are looking to have the Williamson family out at the site. We're excited beyond belief that we're getting this off the ground. So we should have that groundbreaking with a monument sign at that time. And then we will go from there, and hopefully, it will be within a year that West Side developed. Lincoln Village Restrooms, Matt and I was over there today. We noticed that they have cut the area of grass that they will be placing the restroom in that area. And so from what I understood, the delivery of the unit will be in mid-September. And so we have a ceremonial flush, which I kind of love. I, at first, I was like, what? But now I'm kind of loving it. So we will have a first flush ceremony, at least. So we'll go with that. I kind of love it. Yeah, I kind of love it. I'm not gonna maximize it, so no one will be holding plungers for the picture and things like that, so. But we'll see how we can maximize that. Gold Station Park Walkway improvements are completed. It looks great, and we're lucky that we have that same contractor that will be helping us with the Fetish Field Project, which I'm also very excited about because that is a great project that ties in making sure we're doing some great making sure we're doing some great new amenities at existing parks. We, at that point, I will turn it over to our amazing Director of Parks and Recreation, Jill Nuns. Oh, was that a? No, that was a clap for me, right?
That was incredible. Andrea doesn't let me put those things in my report. She says that's her job, so Chase, I am very proud of you. Congratulations on your new position. That he's not quite in yet, sort of, kind of, but not really, until we find his replacement. But lots going on in Parks and Recreation, as you guys can see through the report. Still super busy. Parks are super busy, recreation programs are going, golf course is still knocking it out of the park. Hopefully, everybody has received their new recreation guide in the mail. It's fantastic, once again, loaded with a whole bunch of programs. Chair Leinbach, as you hopefully have noticed, we've got a couple of additional programs at Rosemont. So we're hoping that those go.
I did notice.
Yeah, so spread the word because we're excited about, you know, getting some more of those programs out there in the Rosemont area. So take a look. We're really happy, and the cover is a cover that was a competition for, you know, anybody in the public who wanted to take a photo and then be selected for the cover. And we're gonna be doing it again for the next guide. So if you want to take some photos or have people take some photos, have them send them in. I'll just highlight a couple of different things. At the golf course, obviously, the highlight of the month is Beach Hut Deli finally opening. I feel like I've been doing this for three years. And I have been doing this for three years, so.
What are their hours?
They're open from ten to eight every day. Yeah, so Monday was their grand opening. So that they're gonna be open now, you know, every single day from ten to eight P M. And we've given them the opportunity to, you know, test out the waters, basically, and make sure that those hours are gonna work for them because we want them to be successful. That's the number one thing. But I can tell you that the relationship that Kevin, who is the Beach Hut Deli owner, has with Chase Michelotti is the reason why Beach Hut Deli is open. And so we should be really proud of the two of them for working together because it was quite the challenge. And then you gotta add on all the work that Jim and his staff helped out with because there was this, hey, we need this, and hey, we need this new line moved. And we saved a lot of money by Jim and his irrigation staff and his facility staff just teaming up to get this done. It really, this is one of those projects that I feel like so many different people worked on, and I'm very proud of everybody. And it is such a great addition to that golf course. And once they get that traction, it's, there's no stopping it. So the next big thing for the golf course is hopefully a new irrigation system. But we're a couple of years away from that. But once we get that irrigation system, really, we will be the premier golf course around the county. So super proud of everyone. So Chase and Kevin, great job. And I hope you guys go out and enjoy Beach Hut Deli because it is really good, and the beer is good, too. And then the only other thing that I had, I think that's it for program-wise. The only other thing with special event invitation is we do have Doggy Day in the park coming up at the Hagan Community Dog Park on Saturday, September seventeenth, from eight A M. till noon. And that concludes my report. Thank you. Where's my clap?
Okay, thank you. And now we move on to item K, informational items.
Thank you. Item K one is the Articles Correspondence and Public Outreach. We had two articles, the Notice of Election, the Beautiful Recreation Guide, and two newsletters. And then your calendar is item K two.
Well, thank you. So we are now on to adjournment at this time. And the Cordova Recreation and Park District adjourns this meeting in memory of Dennis Lamontia, who passed away on July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two. And the time is, oh, nine-something. Nine-twenty-five. We adjourn it to the next regular meeting of the Board of Directors on September twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two at six-thirty P M.